Welcome to the meeting of January 28. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Supervisor Arroyo.
Here.
Supervisor Madron.
Present.
Supervisor Bone.
Hi.
Supervisor Wilson.
Here.
Chair Bushnell.
Good morning again. Can we salute our flag, please?
I would like to read this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
CAO, do we have modifications to the calendar? Consent calendar.
Good morning, Chair Bushnell. We do have two modifications. Item D2 and D12 are being pulled for discussion.
Okay. We will go into our consent calendar and we will start with number one, which is coming from Supervisor Arroyo.
Great. I'm looking in the crowd for someone who's here to receive the proclamation for Mr. Robert Lawn. Lawn, excuse me, thank you. Hi, Robert. Feel free to come on up. This is about you.
I don't know why.
I see AJ near the door, too. AJ, come on in.
I wouldn't be here if there wasn't another few hundred people that have gotten us here.
Yep. Well, I'm going to read a resolution about it and then we'll invite you to say a few words, okay?
Okay.
All right. This is a resolution for Robert Lawn. Thank you for correcting the pronunciation. Whereas in 2008, Robert Lawn began buying coats for children in need based on inspiration from his grandsons, leading to the creation of the Coats for the Cold Initiative. And whereas over the years, the program has expanded significantly and now involves more than 20 schools, 80 local businesses, and numerous volunteers distributing over 5,000 new coats and approximately 20,000 lightly-used coats to people of all ages. And whereas community involvement plays a significant role in this program, businesses provide space for donation bins and make donations of coats, schools conduct change drives to raise money for new coats, and volunteers help sort and distribute the coats. And whereas the coats are distributed to various community resource centers and outreach service providers, helping thousands of Humboldt County community members in need. And whereas the program operates with very minimal overhead costs relying heavily on community support and donations. And whereas Robert Lawn, now in his 70s, is concerned about the future of the program and finding others to continue his work, emphasizing the ongoing need for such initiatives in the community. And whereas multiple Rotary Clubs in Humboldt County are working to facilitate the transition so that the Coats for the Cold Program is able to continue and will continue to incorporate the Interact Club at Arcata High School, who have been key supporters of the program. Now therefore be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors honors Robert Lawn's dedication to the Humboldt County community and the many contributions that the Coats for the Cold Program has made over 16 years, and thanks Rotary Clubs and Interact Clubs for their efforts to continue this important program.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the second floor.
Thank you.
I want to think they want to get a photo of us.
Okay.
They want to get a photo of us. Yeah, you want to hold up a kiss?
Click, click, click.
I can tell you don't really love being the center of attention, do you?
No, that was long ago.
That's for you.
That's how it may.
If you want to say anything about the program, you're welcome to.
We've collected a lot of coats over the last 18 years, but not nearly enough. There's always somebody out there that's cold and hungry and needs a helping hand somehow. And that's one thing about our community. They do step up and help people as much as we possibly can. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Take care.
Robert, Robert, you may, Robert may be one of the fortunate ones. Robert, I got to run into, actually, I've known Robert for 40 some odd years, but Robert yesterday came into the courthouse and I ran into him and I said, hey, you're getting honored tomorrow. He says, yeah. This is one of the luckiest guys in the room because he walked in here, he said, I just want to know where the hell the place was because I've never been here in my life. And I think there's a whole bunch of us that would like to be able to say that, but Robert, thanks for all you've done. Yesterday, there was 100 Arcata, the Arcata group, and he had a picture of it, we couldn't get it transferred. 140 coats yesterday from Arcata High, is that right? Just nod. Yeah. But anyway, and there are other groups that Robert has inspired. I think The Benchmark does some things, Betty does some things, everybody else. But it all started with the Coats for the Cold and what Robert has done, that he did on his own. I think he was started at, you know, what, like I said, 18 years ago when he was at Mid-City, I believe. But Robert is a, Robert's a good guy and a gem for the society, so glad he's a friend, even though he never comes and visits, obviously. Thanks, Robert.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I just want to remind the audience, please, that we're not going to be clapping, and so if you want to do anything else, that's fine, but not the clapping. So, thank you. And we're going to go on to the next item, which is a journey in memory. This is brought to us by Supervisor Arroyo as well.
Thank you. We're honoring the memory of a couple of great folks today, and one of them is Jeannie Cancelier, who ran the Navy League or, you know, was heavily involved in the Navy League here for many years. And she was part of reaching out to local Coast Guard service members to welcome them and to honor their service through a multitude of events and activities that the Navy League did over the years and had a long, long history of volunteering in the community. Our good friend Leroy Zerling shared with me that Jeannie was unwell and I had started to circulate a thank you card and then we learned that she had passed. So this is in her memory and I just want to thank you, thank her for all the service to the community.
There is also, number four is a resolution naming the Alderpoint Bridge in memory of Trevor John Early. Trevor was murdered on Jan, the early morning of January 6th in 2022. I'm not going to read the resolution today because I'm going to bring an item back to the board with presentation, and so we'll do that in the future and I'll wait and read that then. But thank you to my board for this. And then also, we're going to be a journey in memory of Chuck Leishman. Chuck was, as far as the travel and tourism community was concerned, Chuck was it. And so he passed away in the early days of December 2024. And I'm sorry for his family and friends and for Humboldt County in general. He did a lot for Humboldt County. And then is there any other things that anyone on, any of the board want to talk about on the consent calendar? Supervisor Wilson?
Ginger Campbell, I'm reappointing her for Measure Z Committee and thank her for her hard work from the very beginning. And she's still going strong and everybody else that's on Measure Z as well, Committee.
Okay. So at this time, we will go to public comment. Excuse me, Supervisor Madron.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd just also like to thank Darcy Miller also for her service on Measure Z. She's a representative from the Hoopa Valley Tribe and she's going to continue to represent. So thank you, Darcy.
Okay, so we will go to public comment. We're going to go on Zoom first and then we'll go to the public.
There is none on Zoom.
Okay. Kent, you can come forward and you'll have three minutes on consent items.
Appreciate it. I'm here in person, not in Mexico. I'm not Zooming, so there's nobody there. I did wish to point out that both the Asmi people and ICWA's in the House today. I acknowledge that. That's not on consent, but that's something I wanted to mention. I did want to also speak on item eight, the reappointment of Ginger Campbell to the Measure Z Committee. Ginger is one of the senior members who've served on that thing for a very long time. And she, one of her biggest things was she does Neighborhood Watch. Ginger, we need you to call me. We need Neighborhood Watch in Blue Lake. So she's a fantastic person and her participation for the long sted that we've had in Measure Z, I think original person there, is greatly appreciated. Number 12 is being pulled. Number 17, I always have a question whenever we have really large amounts of money that are coming under consent. This one happens to be $7,781,774, a supplemental budget thing. And it's just nice if you guys explain why that's on consent and if you can, anything that goes over a couple million in the future, the public would appreciate knowing how our money is being spent and why. It sounds like we got a low-budget warning from the state and federal funding regarding this. And that is a little bit, I guess we're having to set aside more reserves or something on that, is my understanding. This is a, the main thing this is being spent on is for a safe and healthy community is one of the goals that this money is used for. And I hope that money is used in every manner they can to protect our indigenous children through ICWA and to use that money to protect children and not have them put with pedophiles as they're currently being put by CWS. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on your consent calendar today.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. I do want to say that that is a large item amount, but if you do read the staff report fully, it kind of explains that. So I had to read the staff report to know also. And so I'll come back to the board. Any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to thank HDSO for the donation for the K-9 program to the Sheriff's Department. That's a big, big jump. And the K-9, as we know, are very, very important in a lot of aspects and keeps our deputies out of harm, even though our K-9s are deputies. But thanks to HDSO.
I'd like to echo that. That's a very large donation that's really going to help that K-9 unit. And it's very, I know, you know, it's sometimes controversial, but I really love the K-9 units and so does the community. So I'm looking for a motion, please.
Motion to approve consent.
I'll second. Kaylee?
Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Yes.
Chair Bushnell.
Yes.
Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. So at this time, we will, we will go back to our items polled and we will go to number two, retirement resolution. And this is coming from Supervisor Bone.
Whereas Melissa Williams was hired as a full-time correctional officer on November 10th, 1998 by Sheriff Dennis Lewis. There's a blast from the past. Whereas on November 14th, 1999, Melissa Williams was promoted to the rank of Correctional Officer II. On January 29th, 1999, Melissa attended and graduated the AJ 189 Corrections Academy at College of Redwoods where she earned the top academic score for her class. On March 31st, 2002, Melissa Williams was promoted to her current rank of Senior Correctional Deputy tasked with training newly hired correctional officers. On August 12th, 2019, Melissa attended the Field Training Officer Update Course at the Napa Valley College Criminal Justice Training Center. And whereas throughout her over 26-year career, Melissa has held the position of Field Training Officer. Whereas Melissa Williams has been, has been trained in the PC 382 Arrest and Firearms, 24 Hours of Drug Abuse and Recognition, and attended the Youth Violence and Gang Suppression Course and received 24 hours of training at the Keys to Inmate Management Conference. Whereas Melissa has been valued member of the Sheriff's Office with her positive partnership to our neighboring agencies and receiving letters of commendation. Melissa Williams has always approached her career in law enforcement with integrity, dedication, and most of all compassion for those men and women she has served in law enforcement over the past 26 years. Now therefore be resolved that Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and the staff of the Humboldt County Corrections, County Sheriff's Office hereby commends. Thanks Corporal Williams for her dedicated 26 years of selfless service to the citizens of Humboldt County and the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office. We wish her the best and well in retirement.
Thank you.
I move the resolution. Do I move it?
Oh my gosh, you guys.
Who was the second?
I'll second.
Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you.
So at this time, anybody?
You get, you guys have, you want to, there. We've got to memorialize this. Smile. Smile if you have the camera or phone or if you want it. Now we're getting photobombed by the tall guy.
Work it. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Suitable for framing.
Yes.
Thank you for having me all these years. And there's been lots of up and down and lots of interesting stuff for the years. I've learned a lot and met a lot of great people. So, thank you.
All right, stay up here. Let me talk about it.
Hey, Melissa, the kids you train, are they getting younger and younger?
They're now 18.
Yeah.
Yes. First she had a high school. So Melissa has been a training officer for, obviously, 20 some odd years. And she's trained literally thousands of our new deputies, correctional deputies. And if you don't know, I mean, being a trainer of law enforcement is the toughest job out there. I mean, you can be a supervisor, you can be sheriff, and those are easier jobs than it is to be a trainer. And she's done it for so long and having the patience and the ability to train people who have a lot of times, not a lot of life experience. And you're, you're putting these people in our correctional facility and where you have up to 417 inmates that have lots of life experience and trying to, to be able to train people about how inmates work and the culture and being safe and all the laws. It's, it's pretty spectacular that Melissa's done this for so long and she has put her influence over so many different people. She is, you know, she's not saying a whole lot today, but she means a lot to us. When I first came back up here from the Bay Area and I was an officer, I worked with Melissa when I was booking people in the jail. She was always so kind, so generous and sarcastic at times on different things. She just has an ability to be professional, but yet always had fun in her position. And, and though she's, again, she's a woman of few words right now, there's times when she let her opinions be known, okay? And, and that's a good thing because, you know, her expertise and, and her ability to, to cut through some of the BS sometimes and call it out for what it is, is appreciated because we need people like her out there. And I'm sad to see her go, even though we're going to try and draw her back a little bit and to help us out in the future as extra help. But I really appreciate her and the time and for any of us to make it through 20-plus years in law enforcement and dealing with the people that we deal with now, the mental health issues and all the crisis things that we have in the jail, and to see someone turn out and, and to retire and to still be healthy and have a good attitude on life is very, very good. So really appreciate her. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward? Okay. So we'll open to, excuse me, we're going to open to public comment. Is there anybody on Zoom?
There is not.
Okay. And then, so congratulations. I didn't have the opportunity to meet you, but it sounds like you were an extraordinary person for the Sheriff's Department and congratulations on your retirement. I'm sure Sheriff Hansel will be drawing you back in as much as he can. But I'm looking for a motion? Oh, there was a first and a second already? Okay. So Kaylee?
Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yes, and best retirement speech we've had.
Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
Chair Bushnell.
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Yes, and thank you for all your years of service.
Chair Bone.
Thanks, Melissa, yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go on to the next item polled and this comes from the County Administrative Office and I believe Supervisor Bone pulled this. CAO, who will be introducing?
I can introduce this item. This is in regards to the replacement of the Selex Pinnacle Door Access and Eagle Eye Security Camera Systems with Vercatta Door Access Systems and Security Cameras at county facilities, along with a supplemental budget which requires a four-fifths vote. Today, we have Olf Ingert to present the item. Olf is the IT System Supervisor with County IT and he can introduce his teammates here with him.
Hi, I'm Olf, as Alicia mentioned, IT System Supervisor for 10 years. And this is Scott with Vercatta and Tony with DGI.
And I'll, why I brought this forward, because it didn't go through a bidding process. And Scott, where do you live?
I live down in the Bay Area.
Okay. My issue is, is I pay every year to personally put on, buy local. Yesterday on the radio, I heard our Economic Development Department talked about how important it was buy local. Vercatta, I understand, is a proprietary to this area to a Reading-based company. Is that, am I close? Do you have, do you have, do you have a base here?
We have other people that can service the system. So we are the manufacturer company based out of the Bay Area, actually, which is great. But we have other local people, the people doing this install are out of Reading, but anyone can continuously service it, no matter where they are based, local, happy to partner with people moving forward to help continuously service the product as things grow, progress, and get installed as well, too.
And the reason I brought it forward is I made some phone calls. We have like four or five security companies locally employing about 80 people locally. And this didn't go through a process. I know that Vercatta takes care of our computer servers now, right? Is that right? Do we do business with Vercatta now?
So we, we have a test environment that we, we put in over at IT to evaluate Vercatta.
Okay.
And really, this is primarily just door security and it involves cameras as well and alarm systems.
Okay, because I just, and I did a little follow-up. CR is putting a whole brand-new system with, you know, Humboldt, Del Norte, and Mendocino. And I know you tried, you didn't get the business and, and somebody else got the, is doing it, is installing. Same thing with our Office of Education, schools. So I just, my problem is, is when we have a breakdown and we need a technician, we'll have to bring a technician, i.e. Bay Area, Reading. And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just big on buy local. It drives me nuts when I see people driving a car from outside the area, just, if we're going to say buy local, then, then, then we ought to walk the walk. So this is why I pulled it. If, and so I'll see what our board thinks.
Well, Rex, I can read, Scott wasn't able to be here today, our IT Director, but I can read his, what he wrote.
That's fine.
Would you like me to do that?
Sure.
Okay. As, yeah, Scott, this is as of Scott, not myself. As the Acting Chief Information Security Officer for the county, I am here to represent the rationale for transitioning our physical security systems to Vercatta. This change in direction is in response to critical issues with our current vendor and the antiquated technology that we currently use to secure our facilities across the county. Currently, our local vendor supplies three different systems that are not integrated. This means that we must manage separate systems for door access, surveillance cameras, and burglar alarms, which creates significant additional workload and increases cost. Because the configuration of these systems must be coordinated, individual departments cannot manage their own door access and user permissions. Again, this reality increases the time to implement changes, makes the enforcement of an enterprise-wide security policy impractical, and ultimately increases support costs. We have also faced repeated challenges with our existing vendor who regularly fails to meet their commitments under our service agreement with them. For example, we were sold licensing intended to split and manage sites by departments, but the vendor failed to deliver what was agreed upon in the statement of work. Furthermore, I observed substandard workmanship by the current vendor. All equipment was left behind and not removed as required. Wiring is, was unmarked and in disarray, which in some cases poses ongoing safety hazards. Adding to this, the local vendor prohibits county staff from communicating directly with the manufacturer of the current systems. Instead, we are required to pay the current vendor to contact the manufacturer on our behalf to request product support. This costs significant money and causes routine changes to take a very long time. In many instances, the vendor, the vendor's lack of training on the products they sell has left us paying for their on-the-job learning. Vercatta, sorry, Vercatta is an attractive, is attractive because it provides for a single unified platform that natively integrates door access, surveillance cameras, and alarms into one system. This will allow departments to manage their own day-to-day security changes while IT supports enterprise systems, reducing the burden on central administration. Vercatta also allows county staff and departments to access technical support directly from the manufacturer, thereby eliminating the middlemen, reducing costs and improving service throughout our organization. In conclusion, this transition is not only about improving technology, but about ensuring that the county's physical security systems are robust, efficient, and aligned with our operational needs. Vercatta provides a reliable, modern solution that addresses shortcomings of the current vendor and positions us for long-term success. Thank you. And he apologizes for not being here today. So I, I'm happy to answer any questions or follow-ups regarding that.
And I was wondering, our current vendor, did, did we ever, you used the word antiquated twice. And so I know what antiquated IT mean because you guys mentioned that about all of our systems and we try to change them. Was it ever said, do we need to go to a single system? So you're not trying to fix an antiquated system, jury-rig an antiquated system? I mean, there's a lot of questions. My issue is, did we put this out to bid or proposal? You said Vercatta offers, but we don't. They've, they've offered it. That's, they've offered it, but we don't know. So I'm just throwing it out there, why we didn't bid it.
So I, thank you.
Yeah, I'm done.
I also have a few questions of, can the current person, I think it's security here in Humboldt?
It's advanced.
Advanced security. If they can, are, if they're capable of doing this. And also, my question is why I didn't go out to bid. So Jessica, I think you're Deputy Maceal.
Does this one work for, do it need to, this one works? Yeah, okay. I'm happy to speak to the bidding process. This is being purchased through a state cooperative purchasing agreement through the CMAS system. The state often does cooperative purchasing agreements, which the counties or municipalities can utilize to do purchasing. And so Vercatta through DGI as the reseller is how we are purchasing that without a formal bid process. And per our purchasing policy, that's an allowable method of purchasing. And to the point about having used the vendor for a number of years, we have used DGI for a number of years and have a relationship with them with regard to our servers. And so we are familiar with working with DGI, who is the reseller of Vercatta.
We did, we did also approach, I believe, Advanced Security and ask if they wanted to become, I see Rex shaking his head, so, but that was information I received.
And I did ask that question about the proprietary. In 2023, they were offered a Vercatta dealership, but they already had three that did the same, basically did the same identical thing. And then I wonder, on the California bidding process, I wonder how a bid as big as College of Redwoods, which exceeds this for the Humboldt, you know, Humboldt campuses, the Del Norte campuses, and the Mendocino campuses, how they were able to, able to get those bids and acquire those bids with all the atrocities they supposedly have done over the years. And I, I've just never heard of any of them. So I just, you know, and their security, there's, there's other alarm, that's why I'd like to see it. Just buy local when we can, when it's offered. I know we can't always do that. We don't have some things, but.
Are there any other questions from the board? Supervisor Wilson?
So I'm hearing there's opportunity for local vendors to, or to become vendors of Vercatta? Like there's opportunity for that? And then that would basically create that nexus for more local support?
I can speak. In terms of the ongoing support, right after you get the system in and installed, there is no proprietary. You can't, you don't necessarily need to be a vendor or dealer of Vercatta to support the system ongoing, right? If there's a services contract, that would make more sense to go with a local vendor to come out and unscrew a couple of things and, and re-tie them, then absolutely you can utilize anyone that's local, anyone right down the street. It's kind of one of the beauties of the system as well. One of the things in terms of Vercatta support that we offer is actually part of the contracting, that there's full 24/7 support built into all of this contract. It's not a offer, it is a, you know, actual reality of this situation where if something happens, you're able to contact our support team directly to help troubleshoot some of that. And the goal is to help protect the community the best way. And the goal is to help protect the community the best way possible, save the, save the county money in areas that do make sense, while still making sure that they're fully protected and secured. So they're both, there are both options to help do that and also help support local businesses through ongoing support. If they have trouble with the cable or if there's an issue with, you know, something that needs to be taken care of, there is no necessary need to be a Verkata reseller in order to help the system. A lot of it's low voltage, right, as well, too? So not necessarily an electrical degree or, or contract is, contracting license is needed to help ongoing support a lot of the system, too. So it can absolutely help, you know, utilize somebody local to help do that, too.
But the hardware sales, it sounds like it's external, but could have been, if there was a local vendor, that hardware sales would, could have been through a local vendor?
Yeah, and as Alicia was saying, that it was reached out to Advanced Security if they were interested in being a Verkata partner a couple of years ago. And unfortunately, they decided for whatever reason that it wasn't something that they were super interested to do, as we would always, you know.
But as was mentioned by Supervisor Bone, there's more than one security installer here. So I was just wondering if, if there's opportunity in that case. And then also, the equipment itself, if I was correct, we're still getting, are we getting the sales tax here for those sales?
Sure on that one.
I would have to confirm with DJI if that would be a possibility.
Okay.
Can you help me understand the question?
We do that a lot with, you know, equipment for, and, and supplies for construction. And so I'm hoping that that might still apply in terms of equipment that's installed here.
So the question was, if, if you, where are you all from? So we don't want our sales tax money go to Reading. We want our sales tax money to stay in Humboldt County. And oftentimes, that can be arranged, or especially when you ship an item or buy online. But I doubt, because it's, you're going to be purchasing, the product comes from Reading and it's coming here. So I don't imagine that's what's happening here today.
We would likely need an agree, since we're purchasing through the state purchasing agreement, we would likely need an agreement for that to happen.
So this is a four-fifths item, and I don't know that you're going to get a four-fifths today. And so do you, does the CIO want to bring this back maybe with some updates?
If that's your board's direction, certainly.
So how does my, what does my board feel?
What, what is the deadline?
So we are, we are up against a push to this, is that we're up against a purchasing deadline to get year-end pricing.
What is? What is that deadline on the year-end pricing?
Uh, Friday.
And what's the difference in the pricing difference?
Three and a half to four percent.
Higher if we don't get it on Fridays.
Business model as a company and grow a startup company at the end of our fiscal year just kind of changes us, keeping up with inflation.
Yeah, which is typical.
Rex, I'd like to comment on your keep it local. I totally agree. I think that we've, we've been very like supportive of keeping things local. DJI has been managing our network for years now, or helping with the networking.
Which network, our security?
The county network, the county, in a network for all the computers. Security has become, the products are more networking-related these days. Where the, the previous products have been, you know, separated. So that's partly why DJI is involved. They're, they've proven that they're very detail-oriented, that they're, the installations that they've done, they've, they've done, you know, very well. And security, physical security is part of the, the security that has been brought up for network security, because if someone can get their hands on, on something, on the network, basically it's, it's not secure. So the physical security is part of the network security.
Okay, and then I go back to if, I imagine CR, Humboldt County Office of Education, all these others that use a different system. And then you, and Miss, how long is, you said Verkata is a new and fledging company?
We've been in business about eight years and have around 30,000 customers globally. So pretty significant, 3,000.
Okay, well, you said new and fledgling, so I just, and I, I was, I was raised in a corner grocery store, so I'm going to stick with the local, I'm sorry. But the, the aspect of finding out that, and I know you can have somebody else, but we have a contract for maintenance with this, with this purchase agreement, right? For a certain amount of time?
Supervisor X, can I address the question?
Oh, you please.
So again, I'm Tony from DJI. On the comment of bringing it local, I think one thing that hasn't been mentioned, I think is important, there isn't an ongoing support contract with DJI for this project. And one of the reasons why we're doing that is to try and keep it local for you. So the procurement of the product and the implementation is what this purchase is for. The ongoing support is going to come through Verkata, through a 24/7 support structure and a 10-year warranty for all of the product to be able to replace it and ship you new stuff next day. The idea with this is that we're going to train the County of Humboldt IT staff, excuse me, to support this moving forward. So all of the support is going to come from your internal staff, which is as local as we could possibly make it. Of course, if something comes outside of their scope or ability, they can always contact us or any other local vendor to support the system once it's installed. Is that?
And then you'll reimburse our staff? Because there's got to be a certain amount of, there's a warranty and a maintenance issue with this? I mean, or do we just?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. So thank you. And so with that statement, though, Supervisor Madron has been waiting to ask a question as well. And then we're going to come to, back to Jessica for some explanation, okay? All right. Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So there was some talk about cost savings that might accrue via staff time in regards to, you know, working with the systems, the one we have now versus this new one being proposed. Additionally, there was, you know, it's an integrated system, right? That was one of the issues with our current system, is it's three different parts. They aren't integrated. That increases staff time. So, I mean, you know, a lot of times when you think about investments, you, you think in terms of payback. You know, 10 years later, like with a solar system, you buy it, within 10 years, you paid for it, but it lasts 20, right? That kind of stuff. What, we're talking a half million dollars here for this system, and that's the purchase and implementation, as you mentioned. What kind of buyback period are we looking at, do you think, for that half million in terms of staff savings and those kinds of things? Is there any estimate of that?
We, honestly, Supervisor Madron, we, we would probably have to replace this equipment anyway here in the near future. What we've been doing is just adding, you know, as it breaks, we replace it. There was a couple of cameras out the front on Fifth Street. They cost us, you know, over $10,000 to just replace those cameras. That's just for the parts. And then we had to use Advanced Security to install those and they had to come out again to fix, you know, the pointing or something. So that's probably looking at close to $20,000 just for those two cameras. We're looking to incorporate a whole, like, the badge reading, the entrance with the cameras. And we're basically trying to take us up a next level. And it's to do with the, you know, the security of the network. That's our primary focus, too, to keep, you know, these locations secure.
Yeah, no, I know, you mentioned all these positives, you know, and I understand that. I'm just wondering if there's any estimate on the payback period on the investment?
I don't have an estimate, but I know that on our staff, we wouldn't have to engage with another vendor for every little thing.
Clearly, there'll be cost savings, I understand. You've made that argument quite clean, and I appreciate that, I frankly do. Just to be clear, is this out of our general fund, this half a million dollars?
There, in the staff report, it details out a number of funds that are using their fund balance in order to cover approximately half of the cost. And then the finance plan is being used for the other half of the cost. And then that will be charged out through the internal service funds to departments over the five-year period.
So not a direct, a direct hit to the general fund, but instead spread out through the various departments reserve, or trust funds, as well as the half of it coming from.
Trust funds.
Not trust funds, but what, fund balance?
Fund balances, yeah. And then, and then it charged, information technology is an ISF, an internal service fund. So they charge all of their charges out annually through charges to departments. So slowly recover their charges that way.
Well, security alone is such a huge, important element to it. And it sounds like our current system with lots of equipment left in place and wires unlabeled and all kinds of other things going on, doesn't sound like the best setup for security to me by any means. I mean, I certainly want to support local as well. I appreciate what you said about servicing the system. Could very well be local contracts, appreciate that. Sales tax is an important one. And as I understand it, sales tax goes to wherever the distribution center is, where the equipment comes from. But you talked about other arrangements that can be made with that. And you mentioned that we could perhaps do some sort of an agreement to see that we get the benefit of that. These, I mean, right now, our budgets are shot. So any little benefit we can accrue is important, so.
So thank you. I'm going to go out to public comment before we have further discussion. But I do want to say that, you know, I don't think Advanced Security is, and that's who we currently use through for our things. I mean, we're, they're, they're a great company. And so I don't want to sit on this dais and say that they're not. I think that there are issues, obviously, and, but I also am for very local. I own a store in Humboldt County. I'm very dependent on the local people. And I, I don't know that, you know, you're going to get that vote today, but we'll see. And so I'm going to go out to public comment on Zoom first.
Thank you. Juan Cervantes, I'm, I'm going to unmute you and you'll have three minutes.
Let me know when I'm, when I'm up.
You're up.
Right. My name is Juan Pablo Cervantes. I'm coming here to speak to you as the Quick Recorder and Register. Or the Quick Recorder's office is on this item as well. But it currently doesn't receive Advanced Security services. My Register of Voters office does. And I'm all for buying local as well. But one of the directives we've received from the board as we get into tighter times is to be more efficient. And our current security arrangement at the Elections Office is anything but efficient. It's a very difficult relationship with that vendor in getting services, in updating different security profiles and in just making it something that's accessible and secure for our office. This isn't a new problem. This is one that we've worked with for, for years now. And, and it's an expensive problem. When we've had, when we've had services come out to, to fix problems with the system that were not our fault, that were inherent to the, the problem, we'd get charged for those calls. Any little issue, we'd be called for it. Whether this board decides to go with this vendor or another, the status quo isn't, it's not working out. You know, and I understand that maybe their, their private service, their, their non-commercial service is great, but currently, at least for my office, it's, it's not sufficient. It says something when you have as many department heads buying into a shift in vendor. And I, I think that's something you all should consider. Thank you.
That is all on Zoom.
Okay, public comment in the room, please.
Kansawoski, I had three items on consent, and I'm glad you pulled this particular one. I think that there's more information should be gleaned on this. I do not understand, for some reason, and it could well be challenged in court, and I'd hate to hope it wouldn't be, but, but you, you have a process for bidding and RFPs put out and everybody gets a chance. And that, that's how you get your best price and your best package. You really can't, I can't see how this can be done. They say there's some exception or something. Strongly suggest you don't use that exception. When I started looking at the project, and of course it is, it had, we have a budget at $29,868 per year, and we're adding on to that with all these other costs. You're pulling it from every single department. In other words, that's split out amongst your different departments that you spread that amongst. But it was kind of interesting here that two of the, one of the largest departments, DHHS, what, isn't even covered in this contract, if I read the contract, right? So you really should know the overall total cost of replacing the whole system, not just piecemealing it. I do strongly support you tabling this and, and go out with an RFP to the local, local people and give them a chance at this. And that's how you get your best price. You get your best deal out of, out of a competitive process rather than one being kind of selected. So a little disconcerting, hopefully you will table this and bring it back at a later time after, after a fair bid process where all the local vendors can participate. And you, you may find that's our best deal. Thank my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak on this item? Okay, I'll be closing public comment, and then we're going to come back to Jessica at this time.
I was just going to speak to Supervisor Bone's question regarding, oops, regarding the licensing aspect of the quote. And that, the licensing fees are being paid from the IT ISF. There is an ongoing licensing fee. We are paying five years upfront, and that amounts to just over $89,000, which would be around $17,801.80 annually. And that is the licensing fees for all of the systems, the door security, the cameras, all of the licensing associated with that. And that, as CAO Hayes mentioned, is the portion that the IT ISF is going to pay upfront and then bill out to the departments to kind of smooth the costs for them over the five years.
Thank you. Supervisor Royal.
Thank you, I appreciate hearing all the dialogue about this. I have heard that departments have had challenges with the, what you mentioned about managing their own door security and being able to get, get maintenance quickly. So, and I think our Quick Recorder and Register voters for speaking to his experiences. And no, in no way am I trying to bag on our current provider. It just sounds like the solutions that they have are not the right fit for us right now. So I, my question to you all is, and I appreciate, I've, you know, urged county departments that can to, to utilize these state purchasing agreements because they, honestly, I think there's some negotiation strength that the state has that, that we don't bring to bear as a, as an individual county. And so I appreciate that being available as a tool for us to consider purchasing that way. So my question to you all is, it sounded like there was the ability to contract in the future, you know, perhaps through a bid process or by going to our existing or prior vendors that we've worked with to ensure that some of the maintenance is conducted by local firms. And I wondered if you could expand on that and what that might look like and whether we'd be able to, you know, modify this today to incorporate direction to do that. So that might be a mix of you all and, and our CIO's team to, to answer that.
Hi Natalie. So I, I see us as actually supporting it in-house more than we currently do. Right now, we're not able to do that. We have to make a phone call to the vendor and have them call out to the manufacturer. And then we have to take our time to work with that while we're paying them at the same time. So we're paying our own staff to pay and to work with them to resolve an issue. In the future, with this product, the goal is that we will take on the role of repairing or taking care of the issues. The installation is, can be a little bit more challenging, and that's why we've outsourced that to a reputable vendor that we've had a lot of experience with. And the networking area, and this is primarily a networking product.
Yeah. And when it comes to the installation, DJI has done dozens and dozens of installations of our product and its security. You need doors to work well. You need someone that's familiar with the product really well, hands-on. There's, you know, running a camera, right? You run it in, you plug it in. It's more simple, but when it comes to door access installation, the implications of having someone that doesn't really have that intimate experience with the product, it's a little bit more impactful if a door isn't going to open during a critical situation. So the reason why DJI was the recommendation from the county and it supports staff internally, and then from Verkata as well as the manufacturer, which is great, you get a chance to chat to, is it's really important that this goes well, it goes right, and there's no like ongoing support that you need or in the time of a critical situation. It's security, right? There are more implications of it not working than losing a little bit of downtime from the staff, right? There's real-life people implications behind it. So we felt like this. So we felt like this altogether with the, with the county staff, with DGI, that this was the best partnership to help make sure it was the best possible security solution for the county. And that was the ultimate goal behind everything. Of course, like you said, supporting local is important, but in terms of security, it was more just about like the protection and the ability for the system to work as best and operably as possible.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Because I had a, a different understanding from what you previously said. So I hear that DGI would be doing the installation, the product is Verkata, and then the ongoing maintenance, folks are going to be trained of our, on our staff to do that. So we're not duplicating efforts, which I, I think does, I agree, that sounds inefficient for our staff to be taking their time and then we're also paying for service. Earlier, it sounded like there was a component that could incorporate a local company. Could you speak to what that was and what that, what you meant by that?
I'm happy to address that. So when you do a project like this, you're going to end up with a series of devices across the field. There could be a case where someday in the future, one of those devices fails. And in that case, IT would reach out to Verkata support and try to solve the, the issue, whatever it may be, via that support channel. In some cases, the product will have actually failed and will need to be reinstalled in the field. And those cases, any local contractor vendor could come and do that work. It would not need to be DGI. It would be as simple as pulling a camera, plugging in a new camera, et cetera. So all of the online technical configuration, IT-type support would come through Verkata at no additional cost for the lifetime of your contract. And then all of the physical stuff that would need to occur could, of course, happen locally. It's not anticipated that you would need much, but if you did need it, you could source that from anyone.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? So there's a 10-year warranty on these products? And so say we're five years in and, and a product fails, then you would anticipate someone local would come in and replace the product?
So if ideally, if that's what's best for the staff and what they need in order to help support it, we'll overnight ship a new camera to you guys, either the current model you had or the latest and greatest, if that's what we have in terms of direct replacement. And if it's something that the internal staff doesn't seem like they can handle or want extra advising or expertise or have a great relationship with somebody local that they trust and want to help utilize, absolutely, that is completely reasonable. There's also opportunities for expansion as things grow, different products are needed, and you do need an extra five cameras installed here, X, Y, Z. There's often times that, you know, you want to add, grow, expand, or buildings change, then absolutely, there's, this isn't a lifetime contract with DGI or Verkata. There's definitely opportunities for growth expansion.
So, thank you for that. I'll ask staff, who would you anticipate having locally to come in to do those types of new installations or repairs?
Honestly, I would hope that we would be able to replace this stuff as it is networking equipment. So I, I don't foresee a need to necessarily reach out. If we did, we would probably involve building maintenance even to assist with, like, if we needed ladders or something to, to get there. But if, if we did need to, you know, go beyond that, it could be, yeah, it could be anyone.
I appreciate that the staff would be handling it. I just want to be clear in the room that I don't anticipate that there would be any contracts local because you're going to be handling that stuff yourself. So my next question, and I'm going to go back to my board, but what about the taxation portion of it? Can that be amended today? And I don't think it can by what you said.
I would have to go look into that. I'm not sure that in the timeframe we could make that happen, but we could, we could go, I could go look into that.
Okay. So any other questions from my board?
Supervisor Bushnell? There's a DGI representative who might be able to answer the sales.
Well, I, I think that it has more to do with the contract and, but sure, if he wants to come up. You can come to the podium, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jeso Ravez. I am the Northern California Sales Account Manager for DGI. I've worked in role for about three years here. I would like to mention that most of the purchases and projects that we work on with the county do get purchased on CMAS. It's something we're very familiar with. In terms of the tax portion, I could take that back to my team and have that resolved today. It's not an issue.
I'm happy to work with them to do so as well.
So that means that you would, the taxation money would come back into Humboldt County?
Yes. If it's, if it's drop shipped here, which we definitely could do, it would be able to transfer back to Humboldt County.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yeah, no problem. DGI has an operating warehouse in Redding. So generally speaking, when we do pre-configuration services like this, it'll be sent to our warehouse in Redding. But obviously, the, we can send it to the county as well, and that way resolves that issue.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from my board supervisor?
Yeah, and I, I appreciate Juan Cervantes calling in. I just, but as I look at this, I've heard antiquated, I've heard three different systems. We haven't made an effort to consolidate that. Now all of a sudden, we've, you guys are good, by the way. You're a pretty good salesman. But I've been around a while, too, so. But we've said what a terrible system is and what we're, it sounds like we've got a very old car, and we keep taking it to the mechanic, and he fixes one thing and another thing breaks. We can't blame it on the mechanic because the car's old. We have three different systems and three very old buildings or six, 10, 12. We're integrating everything else. And as, as Juan said, it's been hell for him because they have to keep calling in because of our antiquated system. And I look back, and that's why we spend millions of dollars every few years to get new voting machines and new transparency, you know, so we get the best of, of everything. And that's why there's so much competitive in that stuff. So I would, I'm going to feel more comfortable if it goes to bid. I mean, I, the, the threat of three or 4% by Friday, I bet if we told you to hold the price or we wouldn't buy, you guys would hold the price. I'm sure you're going to nod your head on that one. I, trust me. So I, I, I don't have a problem gambling that. 3% is, is a lot of money, but I, I would like to see the bid. We may save that on the bid. So I, I, I appreciate DGI, I appreciate you guys coming over here today. I appreciate we're going to fly it in and get it in here overnight and have somebody here to install it. And our crew, I don't know what it's going to cost to train our crew and have them do it, but I just, you know, I'm just saying, you guys have your hands full now. So I, I would like to see it go to bid, and I apologize for that, but that's just the way I'm leaning.
So at this time, we're going to go to Supervisor Wilson and then to Supervisor Arroyo. And then also, I just want to mention, we have, Juan is wanting to say something, he has his hand raised, and so we'll come back to him after Supervisor Arroyo.
I don't know if, I, I understand the desire to want to go to bid on things, but if, sometimes it actually doesn't get you the best service and the best price necessarily. If low cost is all we're concerned about. And if that low cost is in the product or in the service or in the long-term maintenance of this, of the system, one thing I really do like about this is it does bring it in-house. It does lean more on our, on our staff to, and to do the work that needs to be done as opposed to the external element. So for me, that's a very positive perspective to have. What we heard was there wasn't an integrated system being offered from, from the existing vendor. So that's what I'm hearing. And so that, this is what's being offered. So I, I'm having a hard, when I'm looking, I looked at the bid, you know, it's, based on the sales tax, which is $21,000, it's just not the biggest amount. It tells me that the equipment's probably about half of the bid. And then there's, there's the licensing fees, there's the installation, and there's professional services that are different chunks in there. And so, so, so sort of the lost of local business really, I mean, there's, you know, the loss of local business isn't so much in the equipment in that, you know, there's just a margin to that. So there's really like the installation fees and the professional services. There are not huge portions of this contract relative to so many things that we do with external contractors in construction, external contractors in so many other things. I, I, at some point, I have to, I have to believe in the professionalism of my, of our staff in analyzing this and, and take a gamble in that regard. I would, I don't think that we're going to get, the margin is going to be big enough necessarily to pull this back and do it all over again, that we're going to get, gain any significant benefit. That's just what I think. Is this, would I prefer this to be less? Yes. Would I prefer it to have more local, a, a local vendor? Absolutely. Do I think there's an opportunity for a local vendor to work with this? CGI? What, what did you come to again? C? DGI, sorry. Sorry. So my kid always says CGI constantly. So, so I, I mean, for me, I, I, I would be willing to move forward with this because I think it needs to be done. We, I, I'm hearing this from department heads, that this is, this is an issue, and I like the integrated nature of it. And if we already have someone managing the network and this is network-driven, it just seems to me that that's kind of the way that we would be going. So from my perspective, in balance of all these things, I, I would be in favor of moving forward with this today.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I feel similarly about trusting the input from our department heads. I, you know, I am not an IT expert and by any means. So I, we have been asking all of our departments to look at efficiency of operations and tools to do that, even if it means investing in, in new systems. And so this, to me, is exactly an example of that type of thing. We have asked that all of our departments look at specifically at technology solutions that allow them to reduce costs and improve efficiency. And so based on that being the kind of directive that we've given to every department, I appreciate that this is coming forward. I realize there's kind of a pain point around changing, you know, changing the way that we're doing this. And probably, you know, some folks locally are, are concerned about that. I hear that loud and clear from this board. But it is exactly in line with what we've asked you to do. And so I'm personally not going to change that, you know, that on a project-by-project basis. If this is the direction that IT strongly recommends we go, then I'm supportive. And I do want to note, just to put a finer point on some of the budget item, you know, budget-related things. So we have a number of fund balances from different departments that are making up the bulk of the funding for this. And then the finance plan, as sort of a reminder to the, to the public and those in the room, is related to facility improvements specifically. So it has to be, you know, essentially physical stuff that's being done with our facilities. And the funding source is essentially financing on our own facilities. So that's pretty limited. So none of this is coming from the general fund, which I appreciate. And I, you know, all things told, I think it makes sense that our own staff would be able to service our own equipment. And I'm grateful for that, even if it's a bit of a disappointment to the existing servicer. So the other portion I wanted to note is I appreciate the comment about the drop shipping and how that can address the sales tax problem. So for me, that, that kind of closes the loop, and I'm ready to vote in support of this.
So I'm going to go to, as a department head, I'm going to go to the electoral one. He had his hand raised. So as the department head, not a public comment, I'm going to allow him to ask a question. Then I'm going to come back to myself after that.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to, to clarify something. The car that we bought is only a couple of years old, so it's, it's not an old car. And the issues we've had are with that new car and I guess how that car was built. And I just kind of wanted to clarify that. And, and to ask if our current contract with Advanced Security is one that was bid on. It doesn't seem to me that that's the case. Thank you.
What was, I'm sorry, what was this question? What was your question?
If our current vendor, Advanced Security, was, was bid on originally or put out to bid, or if it's the same kind of contract we're getting into now.
CAO Hayes, do you have an answer for that?
We sole sourced with Advanced Security. Karen, do you happen to know when? I think we've been with them for decades, probably. Yeah.
Do you know, Jessica, how long we've been with Advanced Security?
Yes.
Okay.
Because as long as I've been here, it's been Advanced Security.
Okay. So we don't have an answer for that. And, and I, I appreciate the sentiments of my fellow board members and all of what Supervisor Wilson and Supervisor Arroyo said. However, I believe that the same product and the same equipment, maybe not the same equipment, but the same ideas can come from someone local. And so, as well as training our staff to, to work on that. And so I, I don't know how I'm going to vote, but I'm not feeling great about going out of Humboldt County when we do have people here that can provide this product.
Supervisor Bushnell? I would like to respond to Rex's, like, concern with the price going up. I, I just want to make a comment regarding, there is a possibility in the near future that there will be high tariffs on the equipment that's coming into the, that would affect the, the price of this product.
So we're, actually, I, I think our board, unless they have more questions, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Okay.
Because we've, we've kind of been talking about it for quite a while now.
I'll, I'll make the motion if that's all right. So I'll, I'll make the motion to do staff recommendation on this item with the understanding that the shipping will be changed in order to get the local sales tax on the equipment.
I'll second.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
No.
Supervisor Bushnell?
No.
Motion does not carry 5-2. 3-2, sorry.
So then I think we would need a motion to direct staff to proceed with an RFP to procure security services.
I'll move that we proceed with a request for bids or is it an RFP or RFP? It doesn't matter. A request for proposals for security services.
Second.
Do we want to have discussion on it?
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
No.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
Okay, thank you. We are, we have a time set, so we're going to skip to that. The time set was at 9:30, and I believe CAO Hayes will be introducing that.
All right. Before you today is the adoption of the 2025 legislative platform, and Deputy CAO Sean Quincy is here today to present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Bushnell, members of the board, Sean Quincy, Deputy County Administrative Officer. On the line with us, we have our state and federal advocates at Paragon and Shaw Yoder, Antui Shmelzer, and Lang. Quickly, I just want to give you an overview of the legislative platform and some changes. The legislative platform, as we prepared it this year, I tried to give you all a red line version of the platform, but in the agenda packet, it did not show up. So I have a presentation to kind of go over some of the changes. I don't want to spend too much time on that because there's just a lot of changes. And I want to get to the state and federal updates, especially with some news that came out this morning on the federal front. So just quickly, the, on an annual basis, departments in cooperation with the CAO's office and our state and federal advocates bring forward legislative platform. and our state and federal advocates bring forward legislative platform. First, I'd like to thank your board, departments and staff who worked with us throughout the year to, on advocacy issues throughout the year and working with us to develop the platform. It took several months to get meetings involved, working with state and federal agencies and stakeholders also. The legislative platform overall is essentially a plea to the state and federal governments for changes that we would like to see at those levels to help our county. The legislate, the platform is organized into six, six key policy areas like housing, land use, and transportation, which this organization closely reflects the way that the California State Association of Counties, or CSACs, organizes its advocacy efforts. Within those efforts, there are different legislative responsibilities like roads and transportation. And finally, a third level of organization, there are specific topics that the county has identified, such as reauthorizing securing rural schools. As I mentioned, we, we have redlined these, the changes for the platform. Each year, we go through a redrafting process to try to keep current with current issues. And Kaylee, if you could forward, go forward maybe two slides. Oh, a little quicker. Thank you. Okay. Perfect. So in order to make efficient use of our time today and efficient use of staff resources and consultant resources, we're asking today that the board weigh in on some of our priority efforts this year. The legislative platform is, I think, 23 pages. It's got a multitude of issues. We can't advocate on everything. So one of the directions that we're seeking from your board today is where you want to spend most of our energy. Working with departments, your board, consultants, we've identified these kind of key areas. Integration of hemp into the cannabis supply chain is an issue that your board weighed in on last year. Resources to support offshore wind, public health infrastructure. This is a lot about protecting assistance that is provided to the community. Donating government property to the county. After consulting with the county, this has to do a lot with the EDD building across the street. We've been working with the state to try to work on a process to get that. And the last priority issue is accounting for rural considerations in organic product requirements. In SB 1383, this is essentially a mandate that we purchase mulch and we're asking for an exemption for heavily forested counties like our own. And so the second piece that we're looking for direction from your board on is a direct budget request that we make to the state and federal government. We have supplied four different budget requests. Within the packet, a lot of these are familiar to you all. Redwood Drive, doing a complete streets project there. The Public Health Lab, replacing that lab. Scenic Drive. And another one that we've added this year is just some capacity building for, to engage in offshore wind, to provide staff support and consultant resources, things like that. So federal, some of the federal changes that I want to go over are in the Agriculture, Environment, and Natural Resources section. That's the first section of the platform. Item IH again is the integration of hemp into the cannabis supply chain. This will apply to the state and federal processes there. We're asking that the, any integration of high THC intoxicating hemp products be met with parity with the cannabis, regulated cannabis supply chain. Item AD, eight D is Trinity River. We're asking to secure 50,000 acre feet of water. And I will note on this, on this item, in your packet, there was a typographical error. There was a copy and pasting error. So I have some proposed language on this that I would ask that your board, when you adopt the platform, adopt it with this modification in there. Apologize for that. But it is just, it was a longstanding issue that we've had in our platform for years and years. Several years ago, we, we modified it so it has, has different language. But this will just be more on point. This is consistent with years and years of advocacy that the, that the county has done. On the housing, land use, and transportation front, page nine. I'm sorry. Item three B, Redwood Creek. We're asking that the feds investigate the flood protection provided by the levees there. Item three D is asking for increased resources to provide slope stabilization at the nuclear storage site. Item four E is just generally to provide resources to the Humboldt Bay Port Marina to, especially with the big construction project there. And item four I is around Forest Service roads. Forest Service roads currently don't, they provide evacuation for our community, but they're not currently rated. So when we ask the feds to improve certain roads, we're asking for them to provide a measurement on those roads so that they can prioritize which ones need to provide support and measure that as they go along. Finally, just really quickly, before I hand it off to Paragon to provide a federal update, we are removing item three F around sales tax. This has to do with advocating for online sales taxes come to our area. This was settled a couple of years ago with the Wayfair decision. So one of the few times that we actually remove an item from the platform. Item four C is on workforce and training. We're asking to reauthorize the Workforce Investment and Opportunities Act. Item seven E is on property owner insurance. There are some efforts at the federal level with Senator Schiff is providing, is introducing bills to help deal with the property owner insurance issue that we're facing here. This will be also on the state front. Item nine A is resources for veteran services officers and their families also. Item five B is in the Health and Human Services section. Sorry, I don't have the page numbers with me to help follow along. But that is, this is several additions. Again, this is more of on a protective front, just due to all of the changes at the federal level. We are taking more of a defensive stance on protecting aid that's being provided to our community and aid being provided to the county to provide those services. So there's a lot of additions in item five B, the last few bullets there. Item seven A is around child support. Another item that's being removed, that was dealt with, a bill that was passed last year, I think it was HR 7906. And then seven A is another child support issue. It's federal performance measures. We're asking the federal government to align their performance measures with actual quality of service and not just the way that we collect child support. And so with that, I believe I will hand it off to Paragon to go over just an overview of what we're seeing at the federal level. Hassan and Joe, if you're on?
Yeah. So good morning, everyone. Hassan Sorsor, Paragon Government Relations. Thanks for having me on today. And thank you to Sean for, for leading the charge of the platform. It's actually a very timely discussion. And with the new administration in place, things have been really happening at breakneck speed out here. So that sort of highlights the need to keep the platform and the county's priorities current. Again, things are happening pretty quick here in DC. You know, that's sort of expected anytime a new administration comes in, especially when the same party controls both chambers of Congress and the White House. There's a certain level of, I'd say, excitement. Maybe it's more urgency by the party in charge to deliver on their campaign promises. And they, they definitely want to do it quickly. Once you get into the second year of the Congress, it becomes much harder to move things. Things become a lot more political than they already are. And they just slow down. So again, they try to move things in the first year of the Congress. So in many ways, staff on Capitol Hill at this point, they're overwhelmed. Some have even described to us as, you know, drinking water out of a fire hose. I can say the same really for us on the lobbying side. Part of this is we're seeing a president who's coming in with much more experience than he had in 2017. I actually saw an interesting stat the other day that President Trump signed more executive orders on his first day in office than any president has signed in their first week. So again, things are happening quick. And with those executive orders, there's definitely a lot to digest, a lot to absorb. I want to assure you that we're on it. We're keeping our eye on anything that could impact the county. I also want to mention a lot of the executive orders will be challenged in court. So we'll see that process play out over the next few months. And, you know, mostly probably years as well. There is one directive I did want to flag for the board today. Since it's all over the news, I know a lot of folks are panicking and, you know, maybe rightly so. But the Office of Management and Budget put out a memo last night directing every federal department and agency to freeze all forms of federal financial assistance that don't align with the president's priorities. So the only thing that's really clear from the memo is that it wouldn't impact Medicare or Social Security or any assistance that individuals receive directly from the federal government. But the fear is that everything else, so including federal loans, grant funding, really anything with a federal nexus could be impacted. At this point, there's a lot of uncertainty about how far reaching this directive is. Our team is actually working right now to get more info. We've been checking in with our contacts on the Hill, Democrats and Republicans. Nobody seems to have many details at this point. So as soon as we have more specifics, we'll make sure to share that with the board. There's also a White House press conference scheduled for, it might be going on right now, actually. And I imagine this will be one of the primary topics of discussion. So something we're monitoring, I do know the big seven, the local government groups are meeting. They have an emergency meeting this afternoon to kind of discuss strategy and how to move forward. So again, we'll keep you posted as, as we get more info. In terms of Congress and what we can expect this year, the reconciliation process will be the big one to watch. Some of you are already familiar with the process, but it's just a legislative maneuver. It allows the majority party to get around a Senate filibuster. So instead of needing 60 votes to move something forward, you'd only need a simple majority. Republicans are looking to use this process primarily to advance the 2017, the tax cuts. But they'll also try to use it to move a few other priorities. There are some limitations to the reconciliation process. So they won't be able to move everything on the agenda, but they're certainly going to try to move as much as they can. House Republicans are actually on their annual policy retreat this week. And they're putting together a blueprint for what they want to achieve this year. So we should know more about their strategy, what they want to include in the package either by next week or sometime in the next few weeks. We're also keeping our eyes on potential funding offsets that'll be used for reconciliation. It's expected to be a very expensive package. They want the bill to be fully offset at this point. There are a large menu of items that, you know, are pretty much officially on the table. The most concerning for us is the focus on county administered programs. So we're talking Medicaid, TANF, SNAP. Bottom line is that we should expect to play a lot of defense on this front. I know Sean sort of hinted at that earlier. And don't worry, we do have a lot of other folks on our team. They're a lot smarter than me. They, they work in this world, that they're working on this for the county. So that's something we'll continue to monitor, continue to push back on. So stay tuned on that. One other thing I do want to mention is while they'll be able to use the reconciliation process in the Senate, the House margin is very close. So at this point, Republicans cannot afford to lose a single vote. So if they all stick together, they'll be able to pass their agenda. If they lose one vote, then the whole thing sort of goes down in flames. A few other things that Karen is expected to address this year, farm bill reauthorization. That's been hanging out for a few years now. Sean mentioned the rural schools program. That program's currently expired. That needs to be extended. We've already seen some action in the House on Forest Management Reform with the LA wildfires. That'll continue to be a focus this year. We're also already several months into the federal fiscal year without a full year budget. So that'll need to be addressed. The current deadline on that is mid-March. And then the debt limit is another big one. I know that's a lot. There's a lot more. I'll just go ahead and stop there. Happy to answer any questions or turn it back to Sean.
Thank you. So I'll go to my board with anyone has questions. Not seeing any, we will go back to Sean.
Perfect. Thank you. We'll be able to bring back up the presentation. I've just got two more slides. Thank you. So on the, on the state front, a few more changes again on cannabis. There's, this platform has just been reorganized. Through the years, we've been adding piecemeal pieces. And I've just made a lot of changes there just for streamlining. Also added the high THC item there in one H. Item one E was a request from the Humboldt County Growers Association to oppose reinstating the state cultivation tax and increasing the tax, excise taxes. That's a possibility this year if revenues don't come in. One G is regarding state license fees, especially for small cultivators. Item two K is a request to expand Williamson Act and look for land stewardship incentives. Item three A is on cap and trade. We're going to hear more activity on cap and trade. And so we want to allow climate resiliency projects, more climate resiliency projects to be eligible expenses there. Three A is on water storage and again, more land stewardship incentives. Four C, ongoing theme, looking for more state support for offshore wind. And item six A is the SB 1383 mulch mandate that I talked about earlier. Item seven F, again, government property, Health and Human Services. Item one H is addressing an issue that wasn't addressed in the platform is providing more quality of life services for transitioned age youth, eight people aged 16 to 26. Two A is resources for public guardian services. Before, we just asked for, we opposed expanding conservatorship. This is on the other side, just asking for more resources. Six E, you know, Hassan talked a little bit about it, but we're looking, we're seeing this on the state level too. We're opposing more mandates. Year after year, we're seeing more mandates, requirements for higher, higher levels of service without funding to come and support those things, things like care court. And so we want to advocate for those things. And finally, item two E is we're looking for funding for Prop 36 implementation. When this was passed, resources were not included with it. And we're also asking on the second bullet on the platform, asking the state to consider, really strongly consider not creating new systems to implement Prop 36 where possible and use systems that we have currently in place. And so with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Karen Lang at Shaw Yoder, Antui Shmelzer, and Lang. Hi, Karen.
Hi, good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me. I'll give you a quick update and then happy to answer any questions. The legislature returned in January, on the sixth of January. They had convened to start the session in December. And then they closed down for the month and then come back in earnest in early January. When they convened in December, the special session was also convened. And that was really focused on providing financial resources to various state agencies to proactively litigate and also defend against certain actions by the federal government. And initially, that was $25 million that was going to be appropriated. Once the legislature returned in January and then the fires started in Southern California, there were some changes made to that special session. They expanded, the legislature expanded the intent of the special session to also cover the fires and getting funding right away to deal with recovery and rebuilding. And the total number was 2.5 billion that was approved last week and sent to, well, it will be sent to Southern California once the sessions shuts down. They are still working on the financial resources for state agencies and nonprofits. That should be coming to conclusion this week. And they actually increased the dollar amount to, to appropriate to $50 million. Once those are also signed into law, then the special session will adjourn. It's been a long time since we've had a really aggressive, active special session. So for the purposes of the public, when a special session occurs, it'll, it can run concurrent with the regular legislative committees and process. But there's usually a very limited number of committees, which is what has gone on here. And then once the session adjourns, the special session adjourns, then the laws become operative. So they have to shut it down in order for the laws to take effect. Senator McGuire has put that legislation in. It's a House resolution on the Senate side. And so once that's done and passed and shut down, then the funding becomes available. Certainly, the fires have really recast the focus of the legislature when they came back. I don't think it's a surprise to any of you on the board to know, I believe it's somewhere around 60% of the legislature has some part of Los Angeles County in their district. And certainly, when you take that kind of hit on losses, there are huge impacts to the entire general fund of the county and the cities within it and all of the taxing entities, as well as obviously the devastation of individual human beings. So they've really been focused on that. The governor has devoted an extraordinary amount of time and attention to the, you know, getting the fires out, providing resources, and trying to line everything up so that there's a successful and rapid rebuild. It's going to, I think, really dominate a lot of the legislature's attention. It's going to, I think, really dominate a lot of the legislature's attention over the course of the year, because it undoubtedly will inspire new legislation on emergency evacuation routes, which is really challenging, especially in rural areas. And so it's undoubted that your planning department is going to get pulled into discussions about egress and multiple routes out of communities that are on fire. I'm sure everyone probably saw the tractor pushing cars out of the way during the evacuation, and that's something that was familiar to folks that have gone through the campfire. So I think there'll be more discussion on that, on water resources. Certainly, I'm sure you will see the back and forth going on at the federal level regarding California's water policy. And on top of all of this, the state has a somewhat stable budget picture, but of course, if you're going to spend $2.5 billion right out of the general fund that you weren't planning on spending, it certainly is going to make things a little bit tighter elsewhere. The legislature does get to appropriate money out of Proposition 4, which is the resources bond that passed. Initially, some of what the governor was trying to do is going to come right out of Prop 4. I think there were concerns from other quarters of the state about spending that much money in one area. And so the governor pivoted, took the, took the money out of the general fund, and the legislature will come up with what they're going to do on Proposition 4. There's funding in there for things like offshore wind and other types of projects that would, should be attractive to the county, so we'll be tracking that very closely. Certainly, Sean touched on it, but the prospect of renewing the cap and trade program, it does not expire in 2025, but it certainly is handy if your senator is the pro temp of the Senate, that it'd be taken up when he is the pro temp of the Senate. So we'll be working with Sean and your team there to identify any opportunities that could come from the renewal of the cap and trade program to make sure you get your share. And then on the excise tax for cannabis, I haven't heard anything new about the cultivation tax, but I do anticipate some conversations around the cultivation tax at a minimum. And I've been in contact with the folks that work directly with the growers, and we will, of course, loop in your team as legislation gets rolling. We have until the end of February before all the regular bills will be put in, and so we're going to be tracking those. And then, once we get to the end of February, there'll be some pretty deep dives on some legislation that, we haven't seen all of it yet, but I anticipate working closely with Sean and your team in the CEO's office to put Humboldt in a great position on those bills. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for having me this morning and letting me do this remote. Starting to really pick up the pace here in Sacramento, so I appreciate this very much.
Thank you, Karen. Are there any questions of Karen from the board? Supervisor Orio. This is an unusual year, we'll just say. So I, you know, I know what the kind of tempo of us communicating with you has been, and, you know, both from Sean and from our, from our really helpful and great lobbyists. What, what do we anticipate as a method of kind of keeping us up to speed? I mean, we can all read the news and read all the executive orders as they come out, but, but understanding how they're going to be implemented is a little bit more of a black box. I know we all don't know yet. So I think this year, you know, I'm honestly less focused on the document itself and more focused on kind of how we will, how we will understand implementation of all these new policies, especially given the shrinking of the federal workforce. So just kind of wondering about the, the process more than the document itself this year.
Sure, and it makes sense considering everything that we're experiencing, especially this early in the year. I've, you know, our office has really tried to make deliberate attempts to carve out more time and resources for engagement on the legislative level. So, you know, we'll, we'll send you all updates and department heads' updates as we get them from Paragon, Shaw Yoder, all of our stakeholders. But I am, we are working on trying to bring more updates to your board so that you can ask questions in open session. And throughout the year, we will continue to try to work on, you know, getting meetings with our legislators. As, as you all do, you're all in regular conversations with our state and federal leaders. But those regular updates, whether it's through email or presented to your board, are things that we are, are looking to do. If there's, if there's more that, that you would look to have, whether it's hosting community meetings and things like that, we're, we're certainly open to trying to facilitate that.
Yeah, I really appreciate the idea of having there be legislative items that the public can hear kind of the updates about, because obviously, we're all kind of getting a deluge of information, and I think people are looking to us to help understand what the local implications are. So that, I would, for, for my part, I would say that would be helpful. Thank you. Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, thank you to both of our representatives for being here today and Sean for all your hard work and trying to wrangle all these different updates into our ledge platform. Appreciate all that hard work. Just a quick update on the state level. Karen, I had a wonderfully productive meeting with our new Assemblyman, Chris Rogers, the other day for about an hour, and he was very excited about the idea of putting together legislative, some bills, and is going to have his ledge representative get ahold of me to talk about bills for things I've talked about for a long time, stewardship incentives, as well as Williamson Plus, you know, providing those incentives to landowners who are going above and beyond and doing all kinds of water conservation, soil, wetlands, wildlife, that kind of stuff. And really trying to make it both for urban dwellers as well as rural dwellers to provide incentives for good things that, you know, protect our public trust values. So I was very excited about that possibility of helping to move some legislation forward. He wasn't sure if he could do that for this session, but is excited about the idea. So I just wanted to pass that on, Karen. On the federal level, with the earmarks, you know, we, I think as a board, we decided that Garberville is our top priority. We got four different projects that we've identified. I think Garberville's like 11 million, and the labs are 5 million, and wind is 2 million. And then Scenic Drive is 1 million, and I believe as a board, we talked about, well, let's say they only come up with 1 million in earmarks. Then could Scenic Drive receive that, even though it's down on the list, right? But if we get the 11 million or somewhere close, let's get Garberville done, the complete streets down there on Redway Drive. So I just wanted to really highlight that, that, you know, we may get less than a full opportunity, and we need to be nimble in terms of our list of earmarks. So that's really all I had at this point in time, and I do appreciate the lists that you provided. And I think you're looking for direction from our board on whether or not to adopt all of those various, there was like 20 of them or so.
There, there was.
Various pieces.
Yeah, there, there are two separate lists of earmark requests. They're the same ones, just reorganized, depending on the funding source. So Garberville is at the top for the federal side, because that's what we're seeking funding for. And then offshore wind is on the state side, because there's staffing costs, and the federal government doesn't usually provide staffing costs.
Right now, I was talking about all the other lists that you had of the additions to the ledge platform.
Yeah, and those were, those were just tracking for your purposes, so you can understand what was made, because the red line version didn't show up in the attachment. The piece that I'm looking for direction on your board is the priorities. So there was, there's a list of priorities in your staff report on page 2. Hemp being the number one priority, resources for offshore wind. Number two, public health funding, protecting that stuff is number three. Government property, the EDD building is number four, and then the, the mulch requirements was number five. But it sounds like maybe land stewardship incentives, you might want to add that to one of the priority things that we seek this year, too.
Well, I certainly would, but also, so those other lists that you had, all the bullet points, those are already put into this draft platform in front of us, so if we adopted that, we'd adopt all of those various.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other comments from the board? Supervisor Bun.
Yeah, I want to thank Karen Hassan, both are state and federal legislators. They are great to talk with and everything else. And I echo what Supervisor Madron said. I stopped in Assemblyman Rogers' office the second day in there and had a great discussion with him, and as they were putting things on the wall and trying to move in. But I think he's going to be, I miss Jim Woods terribly, but I think he's going to be a great asset, so, and easy to work with. So as we move forward, I appreciate the housing in Reno part of this. I mean, I would like to see more, kind of like what they're doing down the fire sequence, some of these obstacles to building units, so they don't cost us $600,000 a unit, so we can get those costs down. So it truly is affordable housing, so, you know, I appreciate that. Our state legislator on our Veterans Affairs Officer, we probably have the most outstanding. And Rena Mavidi that we could have, she's been recognized statewide for some of the work she does. And the idea that, you know, I've been to Stand Down every year, and what they do for our veterans out there, and we probably shouldn't have those. Those should be automatically being done for our veterans, so. As we move forward, I, I certainly appreciate everything, and especially Sean, you, the effort you've put forward in making this easily accessible, and, and if we have input, taking the input. So it's a, a very in-depth, you know, and some of these things have been on it every year for 13 years, and will keep pounding away. So I guess let's just move forward and hope for the best, and I appreciate everybody's involvement in this.
Any other comments? Supervisor Orio. Thank you. I appreciate your work on this. You do a lot of work on our legislative priorities and advancing those. In response to your question about the, the priorities and that feedback you're seeking, my understanding, looking at this, was that those weren't like ranked necessarily, those proposed legislative priorities, that it was like 1 through 5 are, are a 5. So I don't think we need to spend time like deciding which of those is, is the most important, but I appreciate the work on that. I don't have any additional comments on that. I think that was pooled from all of our input. So I recognize that things that might not be as high a priority in my district, you know, would be elsewhere, and that we're thinking countywide. So just wanted to acknowledge that and give that feedback specifically, since that we, that's what you were looking for. And same with our congressional and state funding requests. I, I'm not seeing those as ranked, but I hear what Supervisor Madron is saying about some are bigger dollar value than others, and we would kind of have to see what we can get and see how far we can get with any of those asks before committing funds. I am admittedly anxious to see what the, the grant situation looks like when it comes to, I mean, the, not only within the county, but, you know, some of the state funds that we receive are fed by federal funds. So I think it's a more complex picture than, than people may realize, and we just don't know yet what that'll look like. Supervisor Wilson.
Thanks. Yeah, I also didn't really feel like, understand these to be ranked, so I, I do want to say that in three months, we may be really thinking about this very differently in terms of like where we want to spend our time and whether or not it will produce. And specifically, the last administration passed three major infrastructure bills which support rural economies in, in major ways, as well as some other bills that were very substantial. And I'm just going to say the current administration, when they were there before, had zero infrastructure bills. And they're not talking about actually doing any infrastructure in the current administration. There's no discussion about investment in rural America at all on the agenda. And so, and then now we're in this moment where there's this pullback of everything, and this, it's, it's just so unknown what's going to come out of that, that we may, in three months, really have a very different understanding and view of what our priorities may be based on that. So I would ask that maybe we think about coming back in three months to just, just to take a look at those priorities again, based on what we see, what may or may not be available. Because, like I said, that landscape can, could drastically change, and we may want to be basing our, our requests on a more strategic framework in terms of like what is actually available and what we have the capacity to, to chase. So that, that's all I really want to emphasize on that. And all the changes within the platform seem reasonable to me. They're all just mostly iterative updates. I'm happy that we do that. And I'm grateful to the, for the reports that we received today. But again, from the federal side, it's, I don't, we have just no, we don't have an understanding yet how that's going to play out, so. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I support what we have right now, so.
I'm going to make a comment and then go to Supervisor Madron. I just want to thank you as well, Sean. I think you've captured a variety of things that are important to this board for different reasons in different sectors of our, of our districts. I also want to thank our state and federal advocates for being present today and all the communication that they bring to us throughout the year, and, you know, readily available when we have questions or we really want to gripe about something. And so I, I do appreciate you recognizing that there was no red line item, because I was like, where are the red lines? I were not, I know we're changing things. I also agree with the additions and glad we were able to remove a few that got completed, because that doesn't happen often. And so I do also agree with the recommendations that are in the staff report. And then I will go to Supervisor Madron, and then we will go to public comment.
Thank you. Yeah, I too agree with all the recommendations put forward. No need to rank them as well. I would like to add land and water stewardship incentives to that list, if, if it's a pleasure of the board. Other than that, no other changes.
Okay, so we will go to public comment on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair. Caller 3837. I'm going to unmute you, and you will have three minutes. Caller 3837.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I would like to talk about possible legislation that you might consider. And I want to talk about homelessness, and we are all concerned about encampments and the lack of housing. Last year during the campaign, President Trump proposed tent cities. And I would like to propose a variation on that approach and provide emergency housing. We can do that by using the shelter crisis declaration, housing-first approach, California Building Code appendix, and appointed oversight group to have a system of shelter crisis campgrounds. And I've done a lot of camping, campgrounds with only marked spaces and pit toilets to those with showers and kitchen space and just a few tent spaces. I think we would need many tent spaces. And one issue I've been told is that tents could be a problem during the winter because of the, of a provision in the building code appendix. And I would suggest that we not provide tents, that we provide a campground and a place to camp. And whether, again, campgrounds include tents, campgrounds, I've been at campgrounds that had small cabins you could rent and places where people could park their RV. So that's what I'm thinking about, a multi-kind of use campground, but people bring their own tents. And that, that way, we would not be providing a tent. They would be choosing to use that, and they would simply be, we would be providing the space. So again, I think that this is a possibility. I sent you an email. In it, I included it, we would need a change to the shelter crisis code. And I included in my email what I proposed might help do that. And so that's what I would like to talk to staff about or have staff look at if they have time. I know it's really hard to be, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. That is all.
Okay, we'll go to public comment in the room. Hi, welcome. Hold on one second. Okay, go ahead.
I would just like to suggest that the offshore wind priority be omitted from the legislative considerations, because it is my understanding that the local First Nations of Humboldt County, particularly the Wiat and the Uroq, are not in favor of this, and they have spoken out against it, and we still don't understand all of they have spoken out against it. And we still don't understand all of the environmental, wildlife impacts, the cultural impacts of this. We don't, I'm unsure where this energy's going to go. If it's anything like our state water system, it's just going to go south, and we're not going to actually be benefiting from any of this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Kent Swawwicky, I support what both of these prior speakers said. I'll refer to you to my public comment on non-agenda items if you want to know your future. And those are in writing, actually, in your packet. The problem you're facing here is like with the 50,000 square foot, that was brought up when Mark Lovelace was up at the dais. Nothing's happened since. You missed the boat. Our current, coming from the feds, is they're going to take all our water down south that they can to keep the things going. And that's the agenda they have. It's quite clear. I'm going to stand strongly against that. Regarding what Mr. Roger, or your new assemblyman said, the promise he made me was two things. I asked him two questions. Are you willing to keep all the water in the Eel River? No Two Basin solution. His answer was yes. The second question that I asked him was, if we're going to have an offshore wind project, are you willing to start a small trial project to see what effect of this is? And his answer was yes. I would like to hold him to those two commitments that I had from him. I strongly caution you, or follow what I said in my comments on the non-agenda items. As long, and I, number one, I would put on your priority, take the assistance from the federal government to investigate, to do whatever we can to, especially under ICWA, to make sure that our children are not sex trafficked. To me, this is my number one priority now. And the funding will come, as far as this goes, the investigation will show that we have a systemic major problem in many of our major departments here in Humboldt County. And that's what the investigation most likely will show. The county is under investigation on this topic, and this will come to fruition, and we will have results. The world is being taken over by the autistic. Elon Musk is in charge of a lot of things, and we're not going to tolerate what's going on here in Humboldt County on that topic. It just plain and simply won't work, and there will be people who will have to pay the piper. This will be unraveling rather rapidly. And the two children, John and Jane.
So Kent, are we bringing it back to the legislative platform?
Of course. This is exactly what I wish you to put into the legislative platform instead of the stuff you have there, which I really don't care anything about the hemp. I don't care anything about a lot of the other things. Offshore wind is not going to happen. You're wasting your time on that one. And so this is strongly about the legislative platform. And I would like, I would like to see you take on the topic of a majorly, somehow, regulation and money to eliminate the sex trafficking, the abuse, the rapes that happen here in Humboldt County, and back that particular project. Because that's my priority in protecting especially the indigenous and the autistic children that are our future. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Does anybody else in the room have a public comment on the legislative platform? Okay, I'll be closing public comment. I'd like to come back to the board for a motion, please.
I'll move staff recommendation.
Kent, on that staff recommendation, are you going to consider adding Supervisor Madron's thoughts?
Can you repeat what you said, Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, that was to support land and water stewardship incentives.
If you add land, water, and energy resilience.
Sounds great.
Incentives, that'd be great. Thank you.
Sean, do you need that repeated? Nope. Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second, and we'll go to Kaylee.
Can I make one clarification? Sorry about the motion. You had mentioned also incorporating the change to the Trinity, that there was like a, just a typo or.
That's correct.
An exclusion of that language. I wanted to make sure that that's included in the motion. Okay.
Thank you.
Motion maker, are you including that?
Yes.
Second.
Well, I guess just to be clear, I think it's already, well, right, it didn't get added in. So that was a typo, copy paste. So thank you, Supervisor Oreo.
Okay, so do we need a clarification on the motion? Are we good? Okay, Kaylee?
Supervisor Oreo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Bushnell?
I have one other clarification. I'm sorry. You asked for maybe this to come back in three months. Do you want to include that in the motion? And we may have to start over.
Well, I don't think I need to include it in the motion. And what I'm asking about is not the entire legislative platform. It's just like, let's take a look at those priorities. That's all.
Okay, so yes, my votes, yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. We are going to go to public comment on non-agenda items, and directly after that, we will be taking a 15-minute break. So I am going to open for comments on non-agenda items, and we're going to go to Zoom first.
I have none.
Okay, I'm going to give it just a sec to see if anybody's hands pop up. Sometimes it's delayed.
I don't have anyone on Zoom at all.
Oh, great. So we're going to go to in the room on non-agenda items, please. Thank you, Sean.
So in honor of MLK Day, which was last week, I'd like to quote, two quotes from him real quick, and then go from there. "When machines and computers, profit motives and property rights are considered more important than people, the giant triplets of racism, extreme materialism, and militarism are incapable of being conquered." The second one, "The fact is that capitalism was built on the exploitation and suffering of black slaves and continues to thrive on the exploitation of the poor, both black and white, both here and abroad. The fact of the matter is that Humboldt County was built and industrialized through the exploitation and suffering of the First Nations of this land, namely the Wiat, Urok, Hoopa, Solula, Matol, and others. The southernmost Urok settlement, home of the Tsuray people, are no exception. Their sacred rock in Trinidad, Potato Rock, for over a century, has been blown to pieces in order to industrialize this county, used to create the deepwater port, the railroads, the highway. This is currently being facilitated at this moment by Mercer Frazier and allowed to continue with the support of the county of Humboldt. This week, Mercer Frazier has been encroaching onto their neighbor's driveway, boulders placed beyond their surveyor markers, purposefully and illegally making the driveway more difficult to pass through, bringing up concerns of fire hazards and safety issues related to road access. I was told, 'Too bad. If you want to mitigate these concerns, fell the trees on your property, tear out the native plants, create even more environmental degradation in the area.' The message was clear. Corporations are untouchable. They are people, even more so than the people of Humboldt County, and Mercer Frazier has no regard for your laws. They buy you out with donations of construction materials and undercut local business and keep the county subordinate to their will and wishes. What is happening right now in Trinidad is symbolic of a larger issue. This is what colonization looks like. This is what imperialism looks like. And by allowing it to continue, this board is showing that they are in favor of continuing to colonize at the expense and disregard of the First Nations, and at the expense and disregard of the poorest and most vulnerable populations of this great county. No more land acknowledgements, no more empty gestures. I want to see you guys do the right thing. I know that you can. That's all."
Thank you. Next.
Kent Swawwicky, I wanted to speak on a topic. We had a tragic accident to help, that happened to a wonderful family, a ranching family down south. I'm not going to mention their names. And it was put out there that they were going to be prosecuted by the, our, by Stacy Eads with our DA's office. And I always like to get to the bottom of things. So I basically called, left email messages for Kyla Baxley and Stacy Eads. Kyla Baxley got back to me in a very timely manner. That's greatly appreciated. And she assured me that it had not been presented to them to even be considered. So I wanted to get that out there. I also called, in the follow-up, I called a Captain Larry DePee. He's the captain of Humboldt, our area for commander of CHP. And he also confirmed that that particular report had not been forwarded. It's a tragedy, and I highly suggest that when it does get to our DA's office, if it does, that she spend her time on more important things like taking care of sex traffic and children of that nature. I also wish to say at this time, it's very offensive to me what happens with the Lost Coast outpost. We've heard the Lost Coast outhouse. When you get these trolls on there who have no idea what they're talking about. And can you imagine the family who are here, had this tragedy, to have these people making these totally uninformed things? I think that people should not do their advertising with Lost Coast outpost outhouse. I think that they should be ashamed of themselves for enabling these people, the harm they do within our community by people who won't even put their names on things. My name is Kent Swawwicky. I put my name on everything I do. My email is myname@hotmail.com, and my phone number, main one, my cell is 1-707-496-7454. I don't hide behind stupid names and play stupid little games, and these people win stupid little prizes. That's all they're going to get. So this is very offensive to me to see this kind of thing happen. And I'm also reaching out now to, we have a new judge upstairs. Her name was April. She replaced Mr. Kreese, who was a, I have nothing good to say about that particular individual. But I want her to do what she can as far as listening to the children. I'm going to tell you, right now, she cannot trust the reports that come from CWS. She cannot trust the reports that are signed by our interim county council. And she needs to go ahead and judge from a correct perspective. And we need to have some changes here in the county, and they're on their way. So thank you for the opportunity to speak on this today. Two different topics.
Thank you, Kent. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to make a comment on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment on non-agenda items, and we're going to take a 15-minute break. So we will return at, Kaylee, can you give us that time? 15 minutes? 11:18, we'll be back on the dais. So we are going to go to the 2024 Appointed Department Head Reporting Structure Study, and I think we're going to Zach.
Good morning, Board. Zach O'hanlon, Director of Human Resources. I'm going to make my piece pretty short because Beth here did most of the work, and I'll let her introduce herself. But essentially, your board directed staff to look into the appointed department head structure some time ago. And so that work was assigned to an analyst in Human Resources, and she did some great work. And just kind of teeing that up before she goes into it, our presentation is going to be fairly short and simple. You have the report that was written. Really, the idea here is to provide you all the information and give you this platform to have a discussion, and we can certainly answer questions. No concrete. We recommend that you do this because this is a really big decision with a lot of really key stakeholders in that. So we really want you to have this platform for your board to discuss. So with that, I will pass it off to Beth to go over the highlights, and then your board can discuss. Do we have the presentation ready?
Okay. Is that better? All right. Thank you, your board. As Zach mentioned.
So I'm going to ask you to pull that microphone really close because you have a very soft voice.
Is that better?
Yeah. And then make sure you speak right into the microphone, okay?
Okay, thank you. Sorry. So my name is Beth Rogers. I'm a Human Resources analyst in the Department of Human Resources. And I was directed to do a study on the reporting structure that currently exists within our county structure. So that way, the board can evaluate whether there's going to be a benefit in pursuing a change to that reporting structure or whether more analysis would be needed or maintaining the current structure. I'm going to keep this pretty brief because most of what I'm going to share is already in the report. Just a quick agenda. We're going to look at the methodology and some limitations with the study, some key considerations that the board brought up, the perspectives from our department heads that were shared with us, a quick regional analysis, and then some next steps for consideration. And the next steps that we have for consideration aren't something that you need to choose from. It's just a menu option that we put together to be a starting point for what next steps might be depending on what direction the board gives us. So for the methodology, we used a three-phase study. This included individual interviews with board members, which I'm sure you remember talking with Zach and I about that a few months ago. This allowed us to gather some key considerations that were brought up by the board, but I'm sure that you all can share your own perspectives on this here today. I'm not going to recap anyone's opinions that were brought up in those meetings because I'm sure you all know what your own opinions are on this. In addition to that, we had a survey of our 20 department heads. And I want to say that the data that we got was incomplete. In this, we only had 11 department heads respond to the survey. And of those that did participate, some didn't complete all of the questions. So it should really be taken with a grain of salt, and I think it's an area that we could use more analysis into. And then the last phase in the study was doing an analysis of 15 Northern California counties on their current reporting structure between the county administrative officer or executive officer and their salaries. Some limitations with the study is that we, as I mentioned, have incomplete data. It's really not a good representative pool of our department heads who participated because we have roughly half who participated. I do think that the data that you do see is going to show where support does lie and where it doesn't lie, but that might not be an accurate picture of everyone. There could also be varying interpretation from the responding county personnel offices that we spoke to, just based on their institutional knowledge and then their own interpretations of the reporting structures that are there. It could have been that they were viewing relational authority between department heads and their county executive differently than what an ordinance might actually say. So it should also be taken with a grain of salt. And there's also difficulty in identifying an appropriate comparator county for the purpose of this study. We're not really looking at budget scales or population sizes when we're looking at how a structure works. So something that's in the menu options is that it may be worth looking into counties that this board views as successful to determine whether using their reporting structure is going to work well locally. Some key considerations that came up during our board discussions were really the need to balance constituent services with administrative efficiency. A really key point that was brought up by board members was that there really needs to be, any type of reporting structure change needs to really maintain the ability for board members to quickly address constituent services when they're reaching out to department heads to address issues that come up. But then, on the other hand, there is a desire to increase efficiency so that way the board can focus more on policy matters. Of our department heads that participated, there was a pretty wide diversity of perspectives on this change. There were three folks who offered really clear support for this, for our proposed change. Four folks flat-out rejected it. There were some folks that offered middle-ground support or conditional support, and things that they cited were whether, how the reporting structure was going to work, personalities of folks that they would be reporting to, and so on. And then there were two folks that participated in the survey but then remained silent on the question of whether a reporting structure change would be helpful for them. And then just also want to point out that nine department heads didn't take the survey. And then of our regional analysis, we looked at 15 Northern California counties, and of those 15, seven responding counties followed a CEO or CAO model where they have county department heads report directly to the county administrative officer or executive who then reports to the board. Two of the counties that we looked at used a hybrid model that was Tahima and Sonoma County, where either they had department heads reporting jointly to the board and the CAO or CAO, or one or the other depending on the department head. And then, as you can see, Humboldt was really unique in that we have our appointed department heads report directly to the board as a collective body rather than to a single individual. For the CAO and COO salaries, Humboldt looked pretty squarely within the average of the counties that we looked at. There are some outliers. Butte and Shasta County had pretty high salaries for the more rural counties. We were led by Sonoma and Napa in the 15 counties that we looked at, followed by Shasta, and then Butte, and then Humboldt was fourth, sorry, fifth on that list. That was leading all the other counties that we looked at. But when we ran the average, Humboldt was pretty squarely in the middle. I'm a little squirrely today. Some next steps for consideration that we outlined in the report could be to request additional analysis or doing an outside analysis of the current reporting structure. I will say that we did have a participant who reported that they felt it might be beneficial to have an outside entity do a comparative analysis on this because we might not have department heads being fully candid with us if we're doing the study in-house. And there could also be biases involved. I tried my best not to be biased, but that is something that I want to point out. Some other things that could be considered are starting to develop potential models and then we can use that to analyze and start pilot programs if the board would like us to do that. And then the last option would be to maintain the current structure. So tried to make that quick. I'm going to be here for questions, which I'm sure there will be. Did I miss anything, Zach?
Nope, that was great. Thank you, Beth. Just the last thing that I'll mention is, it kind of was a highlight for me through this was that we are very clearly one of the only counties that follows this model. It's not to say that that's the right or the wrong. We're again, not here to really make that recommendation to your board. We really think you need to discuss that and totally recognize the idea that we're an internal HR department doing this study with understanding of our agency. I will say I think Beth did a really good job of just getting the data together to share with you, so I don't really have a concern about that. But it is clear that we are the outlier in this situation. So, but with all being said, we obviously need to make sure everyone has their say in this. It would be a huge change. It would need to be pretty meticulously planned out. There would be a lot of work that would go into it. So with that, I will stop talking. I'll let you talk.
Okay. Thank you. So does the CAO want to add anything before I go to the board?
Yeah. This is a topic that we've been discussing for many years before my leadership as the CAO. It's been something that's been pointed out in grand jury reports and community surveys that there is a desire for clear, firm, and accountable leadership within the organization. I've been CAO for almost four years now and I've spent that time very consciously trying to develop relationships of open communication, collaboration, and trust. And I hope that my peers recognize that and feel that. And if your board were to move to a CEO model, I certainly would not be a leader who seeks power, desires to micromanage. I don't know if anybody on my team wishes to speak today under public comment, but I think that they would attest that that's not the way that I lead my department right now. That said, I do certainly believe in accountability and effective governance that is free from politics. And I think that is something that is, would be beneficial to our organization. I think a CEO model would afford the opportunity for me to take a more active role in supporting department heads through difficult fiscal and personnel challenges. Zach and Scott and I have done a great job, I think, collaborating together in a lot of difficult personnel matters and have been successful in that. And that provides us an opportunity to assist departments going forward and gives me an opportunity to further support departments with innovative solutions to service delivery. I think that, you know, if your board, this is a big change as Zach has said, and I understand that change is hard and, you know, there's fear of the unknown. And so if, you know, your board were not willing or ready to, you know, go with a full CEO model, I think a hybrid model, starting with possibly aviation, human resources, the library, child support, public defender, and the ag commissioner would be a good start. I think those are probably the departments that you interact with the least and the departments that I interact with the most on. And with that, I think it's certainly something good for your board to consider today.
Thank you. I think your staff heard your call as they entered the room. Okay, so we're going to come back to have discussion with our board. I do want to say that I don't think, whatever this board chooses, it's not a reflection on you or the department heads of your leadership or their leadership. I really feel it's, as a board member, I can say that sometimes communication gets dropped a lot and that's where my fear lies, is transferring that, not power, but transferring that leadership and not having that communication that I really need with department heads to do my job efficiently. And I've had conversations with you around that. I've also had conversations around department heads with, about that, about how I feel and what I need to do my job effectively for my district and for this county. And so with that, Supervisor Bowen had his hand raised and we'll go to him first and then whoever else wishes to talk.
I'm not, you're my third CAO I've got to work under and I think you've grown into this job. I wouldn't have said that the first year, second year, but I think you and the department heads are starting to click a little bit because it's just a growing pains. But when 45% don't respond, but 66% of the neighboring counties respond, I'm going, if the department heads aren't concerned, and by lack of filling it out, they're not concerned about it. So I would like to stay the way it is just because I don't want to rock the cart and that has nothing to do with you. If you can guarantee me you're going to be here for the next 15 years, I wouldn't have an issue going to this. But I don't know what I get next. Hopefully, you know, but we're all going to change up here. And in turn, that means as the wind blows, one wrong saying and you're going to be out the door too. And that's the way the seat works. And I don't know if I want to give the next person that amount of authority over the department heads because I didn't see them adamantly say, yeah, let's do that, let's do that, or let's not do that. I mean, we saw a very, very lukewarm response. Bethany, I think you did a great job in getting out there and I'm sure you probably called or emailed all the department heads, says, can you send the survey back? Can you send the survey back? And to say, I don't know who sent it in and who didn't, but I'm disappointed in the nine that didn't. If they can't make the effort to at least say how they feel, good, bad, or indifferent of the governance of their county. And if they're worried about retaliation, I don't look on anybody on that team as being very retaliatory. And if that's the case, put your big boy panties on and deal with it. I mean, that's why you're a department head, so you can deal with so many different issues. So I would be in favor of staying where we are. I don't care if we're the only ones that do it. We probably have a lot of things that we're the only ones that do it. So with that, I just wish there'd been a better response. That is no, nothing on you, Bethany, because I know you put every effort forward. So I like the idea of the other way to go, but I like the way of the other go as long as I have this person in charge. I don't know, I can't, I can't make changes when I don't know the next person coming in. Not trying to get rid of you, by the way, but I've had three of them so far, so I'm not saying it happens. So, anyway.
Thank you. Supervisor Madron?
Well, thank you, Beth, for your work. I appreciate it. And yeah, it is a little disappointing that only half or so, you know, participated because it would have been nice to get everybody really to give us our thoughts. I find the current system to work pretty well, just in that I really like to be able to contact several department heads, but there are a number of departments I don't have a lot of interaction with. You're right, Alicia or CAOAs, like library and other departments. I mean, if I need to, like sometimes I was using the library in Willow Creek for my office space and I make contact when I need to, but planning and building is every week and ongoing, same with Public Works and the sheriff. And also with Connie and the Department of Health and Human Services. I mean, really, as board members, I think we all, we get phone calls, we get emails with issues and those issues typically reside within a department. And so I forward those, you know, directly to the department heads. I have found that it's really important that I don't engage other staff, that I engage those other staff through the department head and their choice and that that's something that I've done pretty good at, but occasionally I've slipped up there and department heads are pretty quick to say, please, you know, if you want to communicate, communicate through me and I'll take care of that. So as long as I'm paying careful attention to that, the current system works well for me with that direct access. I don't know that having a CEO model where they report to you or whoever the CEO is would necessarily change that. I don't think that has to go away because of that different model, but I will say that direct access is really important. And I just continuously remind myself, I do not have any authority to direct this department head. I don't. But I can tell them my opinions and my concerns and ask for them to look into things, you know, as long as I'm not directing them. And it's a pretty good two-way street there with those three departments that I communicate with a lot. So really, that's all the input I have right now. I realize we're kind of an outlier, but the current system works for me pretty good. So, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Royo?
Thank you. I actually am really grateful to know that we're this outlier. It feels that way because I've talked to other peers or supervisors and they're like, huh, our counties don't work that way. So it's nice to hear that that was echoed by your research. You know, the system that we have, I'll just say it doesn't work for me very well. And it is also not a reflection on the department heads or our CAO at all. It's actually a function of the, I will say, the Brown Act is mostly good and sometimes it's frustrating in that a majority of us cannot meet with department heads for emerging issues unless something is on the agenda. And so I believe that the current system that we have results in there being somewhat scattershot feedback to department heads. Admittedly, we of course have the chance to evaluate them once a year and if we need to put something on the agenda, we can, and that's on us to do that. But I believe it really limits the communication and the clarity about what direction is happening and I find it incredibly frustrating. So for me, this is not working, what we are doing. I'm very interested in exploring a hybrid model. I'm interested in that idea that, especially as this is something new, I do not know why people wouldn't respond to that survey, but I do know that sometimes people fear change and don't really want to engage in something that will result in a change that they're, you know, not understanding what that might look like. So I like the idea of considering that model where they report to both the board and the CAO or something like that as a, as a sort of opportunity for us to explore a different model. But the, I think I'm the only one that's worked with a city manager before, for eight years where it did, being able to have a city manager really overseeing operations of the organization and making decisions that have to do with, you know, budget and policy or bringing back that information to the board was extraordinarily helpful. It didn't feel like an overbearing use of power. It felt like being able to get things done efficiently, effectively, and have people be in the loop. And that person having a deputy or a team is really essential and beneficial. And I never felt like I was restricted from speaking to department heads, never. I just see the city manager. I would include them, loop them in. The department heads would reach out to me when something affected my particular ward. So I see this as something that could, you know, a different type of model. And now granted, the county is bigger and different and more complex and we have, you know, not only appointed, but obviously elected department heads, which we all acknowledge. So there is a little bit of communication there, but I think, you know, going to something that's more efficient, that isn't about demoting our department heads in any way, shape, or form, but is about improving that clarity and communication and efficiency would be incredibly helpful from my perspective. And I don't think that we would suffer any adverse impacts from our communication with department heads. Now, what I do think happens is that department heads can't talk to all of us about every emerging thing. And so it gives this ability for one or two board members at times to influence outcomes without that decision-making really kind of going through anyone else. And I don't, I think it's just a function of our structure. I don't think it's anyone trying to pull the levers. I think it's a process thing. So those are my thoughts on it. I'd be very interested in exploring something, something different and it is in no way to impugn the work that anyone's doing in this county.
Supervisor Wilson?
Couple of things. I do come from the, excuse me, the perspective of, I think it's good that we're talking about this and the CEO model. Two things. One, I just want to say, the response to the survey, if we had a CEO model, we would have all the responses. So I want to, you know, I just want to, you know, and so part of the problem of not having that sort of, you know, that, that sort of leadership position is that there's a lot of ambiguity that occurs in these processes, as was mentioned by Supervisor Royo. And that's not just around broader policy, but then, you know, sort of priorities within various departments. I also, I also don't think that this discussion, my view, is attached to who is in the seat currently. It's irrelevant to me. As a matter of fact, if we were to change this to a CEO model, it may be we reevaluate whether or not the person in that seat is the best person to do that job. That's on us. And I don't know what the future of, you know, of our, you know, Ms. Hayes is in her life or in our institution or whatever that may be. I like stability. I like the work that's being done, but that, that being said, I don't want to wait to evaluate this position based on what I think the next person may or may not be. I think it is purely on whether or not the structure of this position is best for the institution. And maybe not even just for me, but for everybody and including those folks in the community. So from that perspective, I really do lean more towards a CAO, CEO model. I, I'm, the hybridized version, I think, is an interesting concept to sort of maybe streamline some of these things. And I think making a decision on that would be helpful. And I don't feel like that the CEO model would hamper at least me from talking to department heads if I needed to do that in particular. So that's my, that's my thoughts on that. I'd like to hear what the public has to say about it and then we can discuss how to, what we're going to do from here.
Thank you. So I would just like to add that, you know, regardless if it was a CEO/CAO model, if you were having a hard time getting people to respond to your survey, maybe you could have reached out to the chair and said, hey, can you let the department heads know that they need to complete this survey, that it's important? So whether we change or not, because you would have done that had it been under the CEO currently, you would have said, hey, they're not responding, can you nudge them? Well, you can do the same thing with this board and you can do that through the chair. And so I don't think that that changes that the department heads would be more responsive to a CEO model or whether the chair was nudging them to get their survey done. So just for in the future, that could help. So with that, I'm going to go out to the public and then we'll come back to this board for a discussion. And we're going to first go to Zoom.
There is no one on Zoom.
Okay. And is there nobody on Zoom or no hands up?
No one on Zoom.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go into the audience and welcome again, Kent.
Kent Swatzky, I'm not on Zoom. From Mexico. I find, I have a saying and I've had great luck with it. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. I think that you would be, you're not in a financial position if something did go south and you did have problems and it didn't work out. And again, no reflection on Alicia here, but I concur with Rex, we don't know. And you know, since I've been here- And you know, since I've been here, you're the third, I believe, Philip Smith Haynes and then, then your predecessor yourself. But I, we're not in a financial position really to be making major changes right now. The ship's having a hard enough time staying afloat. From the comments that I heard from Supervisor Arroyo, there really isn't anything that precludes that same communication to be happening with the current structure. And I don't know why it's not working for her. The public, you're here for a reason. We elect you to run our staff. If you want to make the CIO and maybe all the department heads elected positions, then we feel we'd be represented. But we're counting on you folks to have something for us. And it's a firewall. It's, it's checks and balances, having you folks do what you do. I think it's working well. And I, I do understand what Supervisor Wilson said, that if it was that position, every single person would have responded to that thing and they would have responded one way. Because contrary to what Rex said, those nine people possibly fear for their positions. Maybe they don't have the cojones to go out and state what they should. But, but I, that's very distressing that that didn't, you didn't have a higher thing. And I spoke to some people. I didn't ask them if they responded, but I did get their opinion as far as your department heads. And I did not come across anybody in my query that were supportive of this change. So maybe it's something to table and look at sometime in the future when your financial position's better. You know, it just, you had three people in favor of it. Basically, if you really want to look, you had three people out of 20 in favor of it. So that's pretty well the stats you have to go by. The other ones, by not participating, were not voting specifically for a change. So that's how I look at it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and I strongly, strongly support you going with what we currently have. I think you guys do a great job, very diversified, and I think the communication process does work. And like Rex said, it does take a while to get comfortable with, with that. But I think it's working now. I don't think it's broken. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kent. Welcome, Sean.
Here to say that, you know, I, I love that everything that Alicia has done in her role as CIO, this is actually more my fourth CIO that I've been on with Phil and Cheryl and Amy and now Alicia. And it's been wonderful to see how each of them have, have grown in their roles and their different approaches. As Supervisor Wilson and the rest of your board has talked about, and even Alicia, it's not necessarily a conversation about the individual in the role. It's about a structural thing. And I know within each of those leadership, whoever's been in that position, this has been a topic of conversation with, with all those individuals. A prior CIO before that called me a couple of years ago and talked about a conversation that he had on the dais with his board back then. And the, the board asked him, should we have some strategic goals as a, as a board, as a county? Because the strategic plan and strategic framework is actually a recent development as a county. And his response to them was, if we were a hockey team, and I just thought that was interesting because, A, as, as we move more towards having strategic goals as an organization, this conversation, I feel like, will continue to come up. Our, our, our team under Alicia's leadership and prior CAOs have worked really well in a supportive role for departments who are our subject matter experts in a lot of things. We can't do the work that they do. They know far more about a lot of things than, than we do. That partnership is critical, but we, we have learned to, that, that it is critical that we support those departments and not be dictatorial for those departments. That's never a thing. So whatever this board decides, this conversation likely will continue to happen. Look forward to supporting your board, our departments, regardless of the outcome as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jessica?
Good morning, still. My name's Jessica Maciel. I'm a Deputy County Administrative Officer in the CIO's office. And mostly, I wanted to come up in public comment in support of Alicia's leadership style and my experience under her leadership. This, as some of you may know, this is the third department I've worked in in the county. And, and I've had good experiences in each of them and I, I enjoy being a county employee. And I, I just want to speak highly of Alicia and her leadership style. I feel that in a CEO model, she would not exert that kind, the kind of authority that may be concerning. I have a lot of authority to do my job as I see fit and she just supports me in that. And I, I feel that that would be her leadership style and with the department heads, if that's something your board chooses. I also agree that this is a system change, not irrespective of who the CIO or CEO is. And I do, in my role as the Budget Deputy CIO, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that I do think this could be beneficial to coordinating department heads during the budget process, in which sometimes we struggle to get everyone on the same page about the goals of the budget despite our best efforts to do so. And I think it is just because everyone cares so deeply about the services they provide and so it is difficult to make those decisions. So with that, thank you. And we are willing and ready to support whatever decision your board makes.
Thank you. Welcome, Karen.
Good morning. I think it's morning still. I wanted to speak today from a unique position. I am the Assistant CIO and the Acting Director of Aviation. And I've had a unique opportunity to act in that department head role. I was not part of the survey, but I do feel basing this decision on the position and not the individual is important. In my role as the Acting Director, I can see the benefit of a CEO model, being that, having that support of an individual and helping with that communication piece and reporting out to the board as needed or navigating the complexities of the county. So again, I feel having that support with the budget, as Jessica stated, there's a lot of benefit behind that. And the personnel issues that we face as departments, I feel the support that as a team can help with is beneficial. So again, whatever your board decides, I'm in support of, but I do feel there is benefit in having that one leadership model to report to versus trying to navigate five different individuals. So just from my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment in the room? Okay, so I'm going to close public comment and I'm going to come back to the board. It's kind of glaring that no department heads made a public comment, honestly. You would think that there would be, anyways, it just really stands out for me. What I would like to do, first of all, is ask the CIO, taking out electeds, can you list off the departments that we have? And this, this would be in anticipation of a discussion of hybrid, a hybrid model, just so we can have food for that.
Aviation, Human Resources, Library, Child Support, Public Defender, Ag Commissioner, Public Works, Health and Human Services, Planning and Building. UC, which, you have UC and Probation, which is kind of in, and County Council, which are kind of outliers. County Council by contract has to, and by code, has to report to you. You have an MOU with probation that specifically says that it will report, that that position will report to you. And then the UC is sort of under the state more, under the state more. So I think that that's a carve-out also.
So if we were to look at, just for discussion points, if we were to look at a hybrid model and hearing kind of what your board has said, so I think Child Support is something that we don't interact a lot with. And then the Public Defender is something that we don't interact a lot with. I hesitate with Aviation because I do, I did at the time when we had an Aviation Director, which I hope is coming soon as well, had a lot of conversations with them. I don't know about the rest of the board, but you know, I'm pretty active with the airports in my district, which I have quite a few. And so we can see what the board feels like that. And then in the Ag Department, which I, I talk with them a lot, but, and I don't know how the board feels, but I don't feel that that would prohibit. And I also agree that it's not about you as a person, it's about the position. I do think that it changes really hard for an organization. And I do think lots of things work the way they are, but that maybe we should look at a hybrid mode, a hybrid to start with. And what would that look like in your eyes if we were to do, say, three or four of these that we don't regularly interact with, report to you, but still have the board have the authority? What would that look like?
So it would be a codified change. So probably working with Human Resources and pulling some of the other counties who have hybrid models and looking at what language they have codified in their counties and seeing what that language looks like and then proposing to your board what codified changes we might propose to you and then bringing a recommendation to you to which your board can, you know, change as you see fit. And you can add or remove authority in there depending on, you know, where your palate stands.
Okay. So those, just for discussion, does anybody have comment? Supervisor Wilson?
In your survey, Sonoma County was the hybrid that you had mentioned. Do you, can, do you guys know what departments were in or out of the, of that model?
I don't, but we can get that information probably.
They're also in the throes of the change too, so it might be.
Yeah, I believe either Tahima or Sonoma, when I spoke with them, they mentioned that they had just recently changed their model. I'm not recalling which of the two it was, but we can probably grab their ordinances and I can contact them to get more info.
So just for discussion two, maybe we need to think about the hybrid, the hybrid model and have an item come back to us with some really, some, some language, what it looks like, what department heads that really would be, and have that come to this board in that hybrid form. What does the board think? Supervisor Arroyo?
I like that. I think there's another level of analysis that we will need to make an informed decision. And I also recognize that it's kind of awkward to ask HR and the CIO to develop kind of the list of who this could apply to. It puts you in an awkward position. So I just want to acknowledge that. That said, I think you have a sense of like what, what operationally might be consistent with some of the other counties and what they're doing. I mean, really looking to our peers to see what they're doing is helpful. I think we have, obviously, we have different views on the board about whether what we're doing right now is working or whether it's, you know, clear and provides clarity and transparency and good direction that we're all kind of on board with. So I think this whole process is a little bit clunky, but it is helpful to know that we're doing something that's so dramatically different from most of our peers. And that, that might not be a bad thing, but for me, you know, I would really value that, that I put about how the other counties have structured it, what their ordinances are that reflect that and what it covers. And I think there are, since, I, I at least would be interested in going to a hybrid model and keeping kind of a county administrative officer. There's, there's some functions that are more well-suited to that kind of administrative role and oversight. So I, anyway, I, I'll echo what Michelle said, but I, I think we just need a little bit more information from some of our neighboring counties that are doing that hybrid. And you mentioned that some counties are doing a hybrid model of reporting to the board and the CIO together. So if that's the kind of baby step that we need to go to something more streamlined, then I'm interested in that too. And, you know, we, we all have very different lives and kind of approaches to how we do governance and how many boards and commissions we sit on and how much bandwidth we have to constantly check in with department chairs. And honestly, like the list that you just listed off, having to check in with like 12 more department chairs on a regular basis, on an ongoing basis is, is complicated. And I, I can appreciate that some people will critique, oh, well, that's your job. But we could structure it differently so that there's better clarity and communication about some of these, some of the little things. And then when they have questions about something important and we need to agendize it or through the CIO, we need to put it on the agenda. I think, you know, getting board-wide direction on some of the new decisions that we're making is, is really the way I want to see things go.
Anybody else or anybody want to take a stab at a motion? Supervisor, okay, Supervisor Madron wants to make a comment and then I'll go to Supervisor Wilson.
As long as, you know, I would still have the ability to talk to certain department heads directly as long as I'm not directing them, I would find that to be very valuable. Like I said, I, I'm not sure that that wouldn't be the case even if we had a CEO model. So for me, you know, some of the positives about the CEO model is, as was mentioned, well, they would have all participated in the survey because they'd be directed to do so by the CEO perhaps, right? Whereas it didn't really come to us to direct them to do that. You know, most of these other departments that we don't deal with a lot, I mean, when they've got an issue like library or whatever, they put something on the agenda and they bring it in front of us, right, to, to deal with it. My problems have been more with the, with the elected department heads, to be honest. And I wish we could direct them a little more, but that's, not to be too controversial or anything, because they are elected independently and I respect that absolutely. But one of them doesn't even return my phone calls or emails at all, you know? I'm like, what the heck is this all about? And I have to say, the enforcement end of it is the one that I find most difficult in terms of having some sort of a amenable relationship that way. But I know we can't do that. All we can do is control that budget, which is, you know, significant, but we don't really use that as a hammer, you know, on any level, like, well, our budget, you know, whatever. But I don't know, I just find it an interesting process, electeds versus appointed, et cetera. So, you know, I'm pretty much okay either way. I wish there had been better engagement, frankly. So that's it.
Supervisor Wilson?
Sure. I'm willing to make a motion to sort of keep this rolling because it appears that there's at least enough interest in moving forward with a, with a deeper dive or analysis on a hybridized version of a CEO model. So with that, I'll make the motion that staff return, is there a timeline, timeframe you guys feel comfortable with or if I said six months, within six months to, okay. Does that seem reasonable? I don't want to. Okay. Staff return within six months to bring a proposal with alternatives around a hybridized CEO model.
Well, second that, I do want to ask for, I want to ask a question around that of the motion maker. So we have our budget process really beginning fairly soon for our, our budget. And it seems reasonable to me to make a change in who supervises who and how and what kind of, you know, communication methods we're going to employ in that cycle. And it's not necessarily because we need to, anyway, I, I think it would, it would be a reasonable time to make a change if we are going to do that. So I wonder if you would want to shorten that timeframe a little bit so that like three months.
I'm open for suggestions. I want to reach out and look at staff. Is three months a reasonable turnaround for, to bring something?
Yeah, I think three months would be fine if we were shooting for, you know, we, we do budget in June, so May, May.
I mean, it could come back next week.
It could be faster than that.
But please don't, next week's already loaded.
I definitely want to give some buffer as, as that.
We're going to plagiarize where possible.
There was some issue with getting response from counties and kind of like lack of knowledge around it of the staff we were able to get a hold of, but those could be holdups, but I, I don't think it's going to take, you know, six months would be a lot.
And I often. And I often, you know, in interactions with staff, sometimes on different reports, like just give us something, what you got, you know? We can't wait forever to get every minutia of information. Sometimes we just need to get the ball rolling and some of those things will collect as we move forward. So I think, I mean, I thank you guys for getting this information that you could get in the timeframe that you did. I think six, excuse me, three months time to bring something back if, as long as you think is reasonable and that's fine. And we'll see what that iteration brings us at that time. So if that's okay with the, are you the second or?
I am the second.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds great. That's my suggestion too. So thank you, thank you for that and I, I appreciate the work y'all are doing.
Okay, before we go to the vote, Supervisor Bone.
Zach, and I, I would suggest you call, nothing against Bethany, you call your department head from that department from HR, because I think you guys have your little annual meetings or bi-yearly meetings and everything else. So I think you'll get a quicker response and you'll get a pretty accurate situation of how it works for them. And then motion maker, anyway, the two, is it going to be, is also going to be included staying status quo?
Well, that would always be on the agenda, of course. I mean, we could vote, we could vote not to move forward at that time and I think that would be it, so.
Okay, but I just, I just, it would speed up the process and you'd probably be able to bring it back to us a lot quicker.
Yeah, through the chair. I, I'm not concerned that this should take a really extensive amount of time to, to pull the structures that they have either told us about or getting a little more information. It shouldn't be some really extensive effort, I don't imagine.
Okay, Kaylee.
Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Arroyo. Yes. Chair Bushnell.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Bethany and Zach for bringing this forward and sorry, we're kicking it down the road, but we do that sometimes.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Thanks so much. And so with that, we were going to move on to our last agenda item before we go into closed session at one, and that is going to come to us from HR as well, and it's going to be Dr. Clark. And diversity, equity, inclusion assessment results. There's three microphones over there, Zach, if you want to.
Oh, there are.
Yep.
Sure. No, no. I'll sit over here, it's fine, it's fine.
Okay.
I want to give you room.
Hi, welcome, thank you. Make sure that your microphones are on when you're speaking and we'll go to Dr. Clark.
Good afternoon. Actually, we should be opening with our consultant, Dr. Isaac Carter, who I believe Kaylee is online.
He is.
Good afternoon. Can people hear me?
Can I interrupt really quick? Can you introduce the items, Zach, please?
Is this on? Yes. Hi, again, Zach O'Hand, Director of Human Resources. So yeah, we've, we've run an assessment of our diversity, equity, inclusion efforts. This is a reassessment and we're using the same consultant, Dr. Isaac Carter. It's sort of a reevaluation of, you know, where we were and the efforts that have been made and how our staff are feeling about those efforts. I won't go into great detail about it. This is going to be actually fairly similar to the last item of, we're not necessarily bringing you anything with hard and fast recommendations. This is really to provide you with information. I mean, there are, there are recommendations in there, but you know, most of this is around you understanding where these, where we've gone with these efforts, what it looks like, and then give you an opportunity as a board to discuss. And Isaac does have some recommendations based on those outcomes, but really, you know, we're, we're coming to you to, to gauge your, where you stand in this space. So with that, I can hand it over to Dr. Isaac Carter to kind of go over the specifics of the assessment.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Zach. And I, I want, I understand that you all have had an opportunity to receive the report, so I'm sure you all have made this stuff available to, to read it. My name is Isaac Carter. I worked three years ago with the assessment development as well as implementation and analysis, and I was very happy to be brought back now three years later and being able to track and see what has been the result of the progress of activities of the HR office as well as Dr. Jeremy Clark. So the, the long and short of it is that we have, you all as a county have seen improvement. There's improvement in the increased perceptions of DEI's importance. There's improvement in terms of policy awareness and accountability improvements. There is improvements on how people feel about the supervisor support they're receiving as it relates to DEI. And there have been some cultural and behavioral shifts with the activities and educational opportunities that you have provided for your team over the past few years to try to, to build out your DEI efforts. Some areas that continue to provide some opportunities for growth are questions around how supervisors may handle DEI matters, also looking in terms of career options and diversifying of different departments throughout the county, as well as having a clear career path for all employees so that they feel that they have an opportunity for themselves to continue their growth and development in their chosen profession. So these results are promising and encouraging, but I do not want to make sure that we mistake improvement for achievement. I think improvement, what the numbers say, they show areas of improvement in some ways, big areas of improvement. At the same time, as you all think about what you all want to do as a county and the type of environment you want to cultivate for all staff members and giving them opportunity, whether it's called DEI or whether the initiative called wellness, wellbeing, there are a lot of different naming terms for some of this work. The important thing for, I, I believe the important thing for you all to keep in mind is are you providing an opportunity for people to grow? Does that, do people know what they're doing? Does it matter that they feel connected to them and their colleagues, but their community? Are you protecting them and providing safety from psychological harm or harassment and then having a good work-life balance? Overall, your initiatives show the improvements in the various areas around DEI that are often measured. At the same time, you all need to decide what is the threshold for achievement? What will be your goals? What will be the ideal state for the county of Humboldt and how you want your employees to feel about their time and working in the operation? I make some recommendations, as I did last time three years ago. Some recommendations have been followed, there's been some improvements increased. But as we go and continue to work towards whatever initiatives you have regarding the wellbeing of your staff and team, the DEI working in is showing that it has a great promise, but there's opportunities for continued growth and development. And I want to applaud Zach and Jeremy for the work they've done so far. It's been really, really good to be a partner with them and seeing their growth and development of, of how people are responding to their efforts. And I just really hope that this continued support for their efforts because in terms of talking to people through the focus group operations, talking to people in one-on-one interviews, talking to department heads, there's a lot of synergy alignment about making sure people have a great place to work. And I think you all can continue that work and effort as you all take this data and use it as a springboard for continued growth and development. And I'll pause right there for any questions people may have regarding the report or some details, but I'm hoping that that helps frame what the results were and that you all have a good idea of what the possible directions you can go.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions or comments from our board? No? Supervisor Arroyo.
I mean, I'm grateful to hear that the employee response was that, you know, we're, we're moving the, moving the dial on some of these things and that they feel, they feel differently in the workplace. So I think that's, you know, the desired outcome and obviously we need to keep working on it, but that is, that is helpful and makes it really rewarding to have, you know, focused on this and made, made an investment and to continue to do so, so thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go, Dr. Clark, is there more that you want to say? Or I was going to go out to public comment and then come back to the presentation or if you want to?
First of all, good afternoon, Chair Bushnell. Great to see you. I, I do have a small deck that I've prepared just to sort of build on some of the recommendations that Dr. Isaac Carter said, so if it's easier for you chair for me to sort of just walk through that before you went through public comment, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
Thank you. Kaylee, would it be possible to project the deck, please?
Yes, working on it right now.
All right. Again, I am Dr. Jeremy Michael Clark, the Organization Development, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Manager. And so this really real brief presentation is just going to cover some of, make some connections between the recommendations that are contained in the report and some of the actions and interventions that we've just designed to move forward. I think before I do that though, that it's important to sort of remember the origins of all of this work and it came from, an item from some direction given to your board about four and a half years ago, really directing HR to look at strategies to promote and increase diversity, equity, and inclusion. And this was really around harnessing the increased diversity toward organizational excellence. And so everything that we've done over the last four and a half years or so has been based off of that direction and with that goal in mind. Now, if you review the report, you'll see that Dr. Carter lays out a number of steps that, that can be taken to make sure that we consider to capitalize off of some of the progress that we made. This slide is really just draws those connections between those recommendations and some interventions that we currently have either planned or currently underway. And I won't go through them all, but if we look at items such as strengthening leadership, accountability, and implementation, if you look on the right side of that, you'll see some, some proposed interventions for that. And examples of this include executive coaching to make sure that we are providing our executives with the feedback that they need in order to lead in an increasingly diverse workplace, keeping an eye on those employee demographics from a measurement standpoint, really tracking retention, looking like who we're losing and why we're losing and the like. And then of course, some direction on your board as to how we can continue to deliver this, this work and implement this in a manner consistent with your desires, because at the end of the day, we are a resource. Looking at enhancing recruiting and retention infrastructure, looking at items like building robust communication and training systems. We are really pleased to announce that we, I am now Intercultural Development Inventory Certified. This is a, a tool that is the most widely used intercultural competence tool across organizations of all types. It's heavily used in the federal government, or it was. It is used in state governments, it's used in for-profit organizations, and to my knowledge, we are actually the only agency in Humboldt County that uses it, and so that is progress. Also, continuing with our learning corners, you heard from our affinity groups when this item appeared before your board last month and really the, the, the meaning of this work to them and the positive impact it has on their organizational experience, really strengthening the institutional infrastructure, really looking at establishing feedback loops, continuing to empower affinity groups, expanding our professional development opportunities, which is an area that the director and I and Rosam have been really focusing on, particularly around items like our Supervisor Academy that we are very proud of and our professional development relationship that we've established with the Chamber of Commerce, so really leveraging that public and private partnership to, to expand professional development opportunities. And then fostering community connections, understanding that this work is really important and we can't do it all alone. And so looking at and identifying where we can partner with other agencies and local organizations. So this is really just like a snapshot that shows you some of the work that we are currently working on or that is planned as we continue to move forward. So I will pass it to Rosam just so he can share a little bit of some commentary from some, some staff.
Thank you, Jeremy. Yeah, finally to conclude, let us start where we began, let us end where we began. The seal that you see on the screen is the county's diversity framework adopted by your board in July of 2022. This framework has guided the, our approach to many of the data-driven interventions that Dr. Clark briefly went over in the previous slide. The terms that bound the seal are the values and commitments derived from our great workplace culture change initiative. This framework recognizes that harnessing diversity, equity, and inclusion is the fertile soil on which we will grow to achieve our strategic goals and that successfully achieving them requires, one, a comprehensive approach to, that involves creating strategic partnerships that allow us to expand our reach to deliver values to those that we serve. Two, a commitment to professional development that allow us to continuously gain the skills necessary to succeed, succeed in an environment of change. And three, embracing the county's leadership role at the highest level of local government and building relationships with the community that will allow us to deliver services to an increasingly diverse community. As seen in Dr. Carter's presentation, our 2024 assessment results show that when county initiatives are implemented in the manner just described, they have significant positive impact on the lives of our staff and by extension on the community that we serve. And to that point, allow me to read from a shortened comment in relation to one of our initiatives, the affinity groups. Quote, "Prior to these initiatives, it felt like being who I was was a burden and I needed to hide these core parts of me. The existence of these affinity groups has helped me feel more supported and accepted by the organization. It has made me, it has made all the difference for me with feeling more secure, grounded, and comfortable at work. In turn, this helps me be more effective and efficient on, in my work and helps me feel more at ease and happy in my overall life. I hope the county continues to expand on these initiatives. I greatly appreciate the affinity groups and the leadership supporting them." Thank you, end quote. This comment highlights that data points on the survey represent the lived experiences of actual lives, in this case, the lives of our staff, which we heard the first time this item was in, in front of your board. But for now, I'm happy to welcome any questions or comments that your board may have.
Thank you. So I'll bring it back to the board for any comments before we go to public comment. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go out to public comment. Is there anybody on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Public comment in the room, welcome.
Ken Sawowski, as was mentioned by your staff here, I don't know if it was established with a stroke of a pen at the federal level, but the disadvantage of establishing it that way, then it goes away with a stroke of a pen and apparently that's what our current administration decided. I, I have not seen a really major problem in Humboldt County regarding this topic. I can't tell the lawsuits that come before you, but I'm not seeing a bunch of lawsuits that I'm aware of, people who feel that, you know, they've been mistreated and this, and that's a good thing. That's a sign that maybe the people are happy here in Humboldt County and things are going good. I did notice on the budget that the expenses were for 23, 24, and 24, 25, 15,000 for the, the one year and then projected for the, and then as of 25, 26, there are zero projected. So I, I guess we're, we're winding down the program or there doesn't seem to be funding. I did want to make mention there, and if you, if you pay attention, I suppose you all probably noticed this, but in the projected figures for 25, 26, there's zero expenditures and zero, zero plus zero equals $1. I don't know where we're getting our math from. Maybe I'm not understanding that, but take a look at that. I feel that, you know, that Humboldt County, in speaking with department heads that I speak with and things like that, I noticed that, I noticed there are now two, two males working, actually two, two people working in the tax collector's office when before there were none. And of course, I, I, I know her and she confirmed that these people are being hired based upon their abilities and has nothing to do with gender or anything of that nature. And that's a good step when, when that's blind. I totally feel that, that all people should be compensated equally, no matter their gender or any other things that come into, into this place here. Thank you for the opportunity to make comment on this one and I really, I really give Humboldt County a five stars as far as what I think they actually engage in and how people are treated here as far as employees go. And I want to thank HR and everybody that participates in that, thank you.
Thank you. So I will be closing public comment now and coming back to the board for comment or a motion to accept. Supervisor Arroyo, then Wilson.
Thank you, really appreciate this work. And yeah, I was, before, before I heard, even before I heard public comment, I was going to say that, you know, a lot of times I hear from community members who feel comfortable expressing to me that they're experiencing racism or, you know, sort of. me that they're experiencing racism or, you know, sort of inexplicable actions that make them uncomfortable in our community. Sometimes they don't know that, how to name it or what is going on, but I hear about it a lot. I'm not sure if it's that, you know, people feel more comfortable reaching out to me for some reason or why that might be. And I think if, a lot of times when people think everything's fine, it's because they're not necessarily part of the group that's feeling like they're not having an inclusive and positive experience. And so creating that space where people can feel some sense of cultural connection or just comfort and don't have, a sense of comfort and don't have to kind of explain everything about their upbringing and their day-to-day lives and those experiences is really valuable. And it's not necessarily about the people that aren't going to those meetings, it's about the people who are. So I have heard, you know, just last night in talking about the experiences of medical providers, doctors and nurse practitioners and, you know, primary care, healthcare workers who we desperately need in our community. You know, one of the things that came up in a lot of those interviews, particularly with Latino healthcare providers and Asian healthcare providers who didn't feel they had a sense of community, was longing for that sense of community. So I know that, you know, we're talking about our efforts within kind of our workforce as well as how we serve the public. But it does matter to people to feel like they can find, you know, of course, they're gonna serve all the community members, but that sense of relief and comfort comes when you do have some similarities as far as, you know, kind of your life story and background. And it's hard to explain, but we all know that feeling of comfort when we're with people that we've known for a long time or our family members, and we can share beloved foods together and all the things that kind of make our experience unique. So I think continuing to support that for employees is really meaningful. And I've heard from a lot of our employees also that they really appreciate the diversity affinity group, they appreciate the queer affinity group, and that these efforts really mean a lot to them. So it seems like something that we can continue to support without a lot of, you know, from my perspective, without a lot of controversy. It's creating a space where people are allowed to take some time together to really feel connected to each other and therefore more connected to their job and the meaningful public service that they do. And to me, that's worth a lot. So thanks for helping get that going and I'm grateful that you've done it.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson.
Thanks for this report and update. And I've focused more on the recommendations because I do feel like there has been a positive culture change and not just culture in the way we may think about it, but also just a workplace culture and professionalism and the feeling of opportunity to grow within this institution. This is a place where people spend a lot of their time, you know, and a lot of their waking hours in the week. And so it's good that we create a place that is focused on our output and our ability to service the community, but then also focused on making sure the employees are valued and working well and feeling supported. It's really important. We all, in the private sector and the public sector, both, I mean, just that's what you want. So in my, from my perspective, these recommendations that, in sort of keeping, just make the workplace a better place. And in that, in that way, we get, you know, more retention. And in the quest for the most qualified workers and the most qualified employees, what you want is a broad swath of people applying to those positions. And the one real way that you get more applicants is have an institution or a business or whatever it is that feels that people interpret as being welcoming to everybody. And so I think it's important in that quest of to get the most qualified people that we have more people apply. And I think that these, these goals and aspirations get us to that place, that actually just makes a better institution. And there's a lot in here that's about advancing the employee through professional leadership work as well as development and everyone's communication skills and all those sorts of things that are just beneficial, you know, institutionally and to the individual employee. So for me, this is all good work. When we want to make a motion to accept and file, I'm happy to do that. But that's my motion. I make the motion to accept and file and thank the staff for the work that they're doing.
I'll second. Okay. I also want to thank you, you both and the gentleman online, I'm sorry, I can't remember his name, for... Isaac, thank you. For the presentation. I know that Jeremy and I have talked often and I, at times, have struggled with things and I've been able to clarify, let me rephrase that, struggled with the proper way to either address someone or the way I use analogies. And so I really appreciate the heads up and the feedback that you've given me because I want to do it right. I just don't always know the right way. And sometimes it's difficult to say, I just don't know. Please help me here. And so I've appreciated that and that people, our organization and staff feel comfortable and that we can allow grace for people. And that's something that also you have, you know, stated that we're allowed to make mistakes but, and to give people grace and to realize that, you know, with changing times and changing things, that learning it is part of what we're doing here. And so I just really want to appreciate that, appreciate the efforts and the time and the sincerity that you have put into this program. And with that, I will go to anybody else that wants to speak or we can go to a motion.
Chair Bushnell, pardon the intrusion. Our consultant would like to make a comment, and I just wanted to see if it'd be possible to indulge him.
Absolutely. Kaylee, can you bring him back up?
Yes, I'm working on it.
Thank you. I'll make this really quick. I'm fortunate to choose the work that I do, but one of the things I want to convey to you all, and I've heard something about community and Humboldt being unique, and I feel that it is. I used to live in Humboldt. I worked there for, worked at the university for six and a half years. One of my sons lives in Humboldt still, and I still have family and friends in the area. And I want to say and just echo what has been said, that a lot of times when we're talking about diversity, we're really talking about how do we welcome someone into the community and make them feel like they are a part of the community. And I can say that in my experience that I had, I had some great supervisors and mentors between Reese Hughes and John Capacho and Kate Leibert and others who made my life there such a community that I still visit and come there probably on an annual basis. And I think a lot of times when we look at what we can do to make sure we are diversifying or have a cool workplace and things are going well, it's the simple things. It's the being invited to a meal when you meet your new colleagues, being invited to a lunch, getting an opportunity to invite it to your kids' sporting events. Those are the things that extend our community and those things are universal and they're easy, free things to do. So I encourage you all, I enjoyed hearing the conversation about how people have, are taking in these results and what you're gonna do with the recommendations. But I want to echo that I think part of this is also the human experience, and I can say that Humboldt County gave me that. It doesn't mean it was perfect, but it's a place that I still call home and it's because it's a community. So I hope you continue to build on that as you all work at these endeavors and move your initiatives forward.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Dr. Carter. Those were wonderful words. And I want to thank our team here. You guys have been doing great work, but really, it's everybody involved, you know, everybody in the county that are doing that great work. There's a lot going on at the national level right now. And like earlier with our legislative platform, you know, we're gonna have to revisit this based on what may or may not be happening at the federal level and things like that. But regardless of what happens, just looking at the most recent election, Humboldt didn't make a big shift one way or the other. It stayed pretty much true to its, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion and the way we try to behave here. And it really is all of us with every action we take every day that makes this all work. So I'm very, I feel very honored to live here in Humboldt County. I know it isn't perfect, as was mentioned, but I think we're trying hard to try and move in the right direction. And it is kind of a day-to-day effort, right? We gotta keep at it. It's never gonna be done. We're never gonna achieve it, so to speak, but we can make progress. We can make improvements, as was mentioned in the presentation. So mainly, I want to thank you all for your efforts, and I think it's made a huge difference for our staff, our coworkers, and feeling that they're heard, that they're included. And yeah, we have a lot of work to do every day, so, but thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the kind words, Chair Bushnell. I wanted to be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that earlier, so thank you very much.
Thank you. So Kaylee, we'll go for the vote, please. Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, and thank you again.
Thank you.
So at this time, we are going to be taking a break until 1:00. We will be coming back in and reading in closed session. So if I could ask my board members to please be back here promptly at 1:00. Following that, we will read in closed session and then be out for closed session up to probably three to four hours. Okay? So we're gonna be in recess now for 20 minutes. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54957.6, in order to review the county's position and instruct its designated labor negotiators. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54956.9D1, in order to discuss existing litigation in the cases of Corinne Morgan Thomas and Doug Thomas et al. versus County of Humboldt et al., Ryan Thomas Smith versus Humboldt County Sheriff's Office Correctional Facility, Case Ryan Thomas Smith versus Sheriff Hansel, Case Number 24-CV-01417-PHK. Dana Reeves versus County of Humboldt et al., Humboldt County Superior Court, Case Number CV2402231. And Potley Valley Hydroelectric Project, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission Project Number 77-285.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We will go to public comment on Zoom. Is there anyone?
There is not.
Okay, public comment in the room. Welcome.
Ken Sawinski, I did wish to mention, I believe you're going into labor negotiations, and I did see all the union people here. Then left, you outlasted them. Anyway, I just, you know, want to represent them in somewhat. It's gonna be very difficult to do anything for these people because of our budgetary constraints. So if there's some way to compensate them like you have been in a few additional days off or whatever perks you can give them without costing us additional money that we don't have or won't have. So that's my thought. There's, I think there's, what, like six legal cases that we have to deal with? The last one, number seven, is the one that interests me. It's litigation, discuss existing litigation in a matter of Potley Valley Hydroelectric FERC thing there. And it's not clear whether we're suing them or they're suing us or what's going on. But no matter what, that's a very important fight that I think Mother Nature would like us to take to the mat. We want to keep that water in there. The fishery, this is a fantastic year for these fishery projects, early rains, the clam dam removal worked perfectly. But whatever we can do to have that hold our current assemblyman to his promise to not take, put the water back in there, I don't see any reason to give or do a double basin solution. I think this is pretty cut and dry. I think we should hold out and hold out for that water all going back there and lock down that 50,000 acre foot before somebody else steals it from us. So thank you for opportunity to speak. Do you have an estimated time?
I'm gonna ask, when public comment's done, I'll ask.
I appreciate that. And so thank you for the time you spend. Of course, the other thing, clarity, there's nothing less on the agenda other than this.
We will be done after this.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Don't say anything, closing public comment. Counsel, how long do you anticipate?
I would say probably two and a half to three hours.
Okay, thank you. And we're gonna adjourn into closed session pretty quick as we have people waiting. Thank you. Okay, thank you. We're back from closed session and we'll go to county counsel for a report out.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. There was no reportable action taken with regard to items G2, G3, and G7. With regard to items G4 through G6, the board voted unanimously to authorize the risk manager to enter into agreements with the Mitchell Law Firm for defense of the cases of Ryan Thomas Smith versus Humboldt County Sheriff's Office Correctional Facility, Case Number Ryan Thomas Smith versus Sheriff Hansel, Case Number 24-CV-01417-PHK. And Dana Reeves versus County of Humboldt et al., Humboldt County Superior Court, Case Number CV2402231.
Thank you very much. And I want to remind the public that we're closing in memory today of Chuck Leishman and...
And Jeannie Conselier.
Thank you. We'll see you next week.
Thanks, guys. See you next week.